Good morning. Welcome to the Tuesday, May 7th, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the clerk please call the rule?
Good morning, Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Desmond Frost.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
And Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov and can be heard live for free on 96.5 FM KUBU Radio. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, May 10th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Sitting is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to the clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of the public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak, and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And let me just make the point of saying that we not only have the best clerk of the Board that we could have, we have the best assistant clerk of the Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
First item, please.
Your first item is your off-agenda public comments, not related to items on the posted agenda.
Do we have any members of the public?
We do. We have five speakers.
Okay.
Would Jim Reeves, please, come to the podium?
Morning. You have two minutes.
The U.S. Supreme Court decision voted 9 to 0 to vacate and remand a traffic mitigation fee of $23,420 charged to an elderly El Dorado County man. The U.S. Supreme Court ruled on April 12th that the individuals, developers, and home builders in California may protest impact fees commonly imposed by cities and counties to supposedly pay for new roads, schools, sewers, and other public improvement as unconstitutional taxes. This crushes California's impact fees as an unconstitutional taking. The Supreme Court focused on probation under the Fifth Amendment taking clause that prohibits state and local government for failing to pay for fair value when infringing on citizens' property rights. Almost all California's 58 counties, 482 cities, towns, and villages began imposing impact fees after 2006. That can run between $21,000 to $1,700,000 per dwelling and account for up to 18% of the cost of new homes, medium-sized homes. Shasta County Chairman of the Board Supervisor Kevin Cry led Shasta County to be the first county in this state to terminate these fees. Chairman Cry said that under the California Constitution, state and local taxes must be approved by a vote of the people, but greedy politicians have ignored the constitutional requirement and administratively passed a binding array of so-called impact fees to avoid a vote by affected residents. Questions? Are you considering terminating impact fees after the U.S. Supreme Court decision calling them an unconstitutional tax? Two, how many or how much in impact fees have you charged over the last 10 years? Three, if you are not going to terminate impact fees, how do you plan to justify them as fees rather than taxes? Four, have you set up a process to handle refunds to residents that were inappropriately assessed impact fees in the past? Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Matson.
Could you be so kind to hand one for me as well? Good morning. How are you? I'm Sarah Matson, and I'm a resident in District 3 and a resident of New California, Sacramento Rural. Today, I'm having given to you a press release that was on April 15th, the state legislature, signed by Governor Newsom, an emergency spending freeze. And I just wanted to bring that to public record so that you would know that along with that freeze, there was also an assembly pass, AB 106, which gave, is going to give a discretionary emergency tax increase, which totally relates to the impact fees that my colleague Jim Reeves just reported on. And what I'm asking, if you actually honor your oath of office and you represent we, the people, the community that actually voted you in in each of our districts, that you would cease the election by voting machines. You're going to save millions and millions and millions of dollars. The cost of mail-out ballots per individual registered voter, $19.50 times our almost 900,000 registered voters in Sacramento County, equals almost $5 million of just sending, mailing them. When you calculate the cost of return, which was about 39% of the registered voters returned them, we're talking 17 million total. You know how much it would cost for an in-person paper ballot, small precincts, count, one day, probably a million, probably less. I just implore to you, and I yield the rest of my time, I hope you ponder this and consider it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You yield five seconds. Lynn Reeves, please.
Last week, I sent all of you an email offering you a complimentary ticket to go see David Clements, the producer of the movie Let My People Go, who is coming to the Mido Community Center in Roseville tomorrow evening. I am giving you the same information today. There is also a QR code on the back of the paper that I gave you, which will allow you to watch his movie free of charge. The movie makes it clear that our elections in California and the United States are compromised. Therefore, we need to move away from the machines and go back to one-day voting with voter ID, paper ballots, and transparent counting. Not only are our elections corrupted by using mail-in ballots and slot machine-type machines to count the ballots over many days, they are also costing an excessive amount of money that our counties simply do not have. I hope that you take advantage of our offer. You need to hear what your constituents are saying and understanding about our elections. In a Republican form of government, the elected representatives listen to the people and do what they ask. When the elected representatives do not listen and just tell the people what to do, it definitely becomes a problem. That is not Constitution, and it violates our civil liberties. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alexander Hampton. Morning.
Good morning, Supervisors. First, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. I am here to speak about some of the worries about the hard-working men and women building projects in the Sacramento. Thirty-one percent of construction workers lack health insurance. That's nearly three times the rate for all workers. We have seen the devastation COVID-19 has caused and have seen how important healthcare is for everyone. These workers should not be excluded of that. There are irresponsible contractors, developers currently building projects around this county that do not care about the workers and pay them very low wages without healthcare just to put more money on their pockets. These same contractors and developers will then come to these meetings and tell you and the public that they care about the community and the people in it, and that's why they want to build these projects. We know that is not the case just by their actions. To help eliminate this problem, we need to make sure that prevailing wage, healthcare, apprenticeship, compliance, and local hire are required on housing projects built in Sacramento. As leaders, as a community, what are you going to do to work towards this goal, to make sure that this doesn't happen to the workers anymore? They deserve better. Thank you again for giving me the time to allow me to speak this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hampton. Feel free to reach out to my office. Dave Capazano.
My name is Dave Capazano. We are coming to you in peace, as we, the people, as seen in California Constitution, Article 2, Section 1. Today, we are here to remind all of us how important the constitutions are to the good of our community. We have studied and learned that government is instituted for the common benefit, protection, and security of the whole community, and not for the private interest of any one individual, family, or class of people. And whenever the purpose of government is perverted, public liberty is manifestly endangered. We have also learned that a frequent recurrence of fundamental principles of the Constitution and the constant adherence to justice, moderation, temperance, industry, fragility, and morality are indispensable and necessary to preserve the blessings of liberty and good government. The Constitution guarantees the people the right to require their public servants to always observe these fundamental principles exactly for the good administration of government. We want to thank Supervisor Sue Frost for quoting the California Constitution on April 23rd and voting her conscience. It is a good reminder how our constitutions are the highest law of the land and should always be kept in mind when making decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that's all of the public comment?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That takes us to our consent items. Sorry, Items 2 through 41. Are there any members of the Board that would like to address any items on consent? All right. Mr. Serna.
Do we need to hear from the clerk first about any adjustments to the consent calendar?
The only note I have is to introduce a Board of Supervisor ordinance and continue to May 21st. It's Introduce an Ordinance Amending Section 90 of Ordinance Number 703 to revise the speed limit zone on Hazel Avenue, establishing new speed limits for Titan Drive and Waterman Road, and revise the speed limit on 18th Street. Wait for reading of the ordinance and continue to May 21st for adoption.
Thank you.
And that concludes the notes.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chair. I just wanted to express my thanks publicly for, on our side, that is, the county's side, everyone that's been responsible for helping to coordinate District 1's, some of District 1's concluding ARPA funding, which I think is very critical in today's vote because we're looking at the prospect of significantly enhancing a number of programs, not the least of which is the Street Medicine Program, working with One Community Health. This is a program that I'm convinced will go a long way to help those that are unsheltered in our community have immediate access to resources to maintain their health and their mental health as best as possible. So I want to thank the partners, One Community Health. I certainly want to thank my Chief of Staff. This has been, for all five of us, a fairly rigorous effort over the last year and a half to think carefully and thoughtfully about how best to apply these rare federal dollars to things that we all care about. But I have to really give specific thanks to my Chief of Staff, Lisa Nava, who's been incredibly cooperative and thoughtful, working with our finance staff. There's a lot of do's and don'ts around the ARPA funding, and that has to be carefully reviewed. That takes a lot of time and energy, and so wanted to make sure that I thanked my staff for helping in that respect. So that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Desmond.
Yeah, I'd like to make a quick comment on Item 19.
Item number 19 is to approve $3 million in funding allocation for projects under a neighborhood improvement initiative targeting blighted communities and authorize agreement with the South Gate Recreation and Park District.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I just want to thank staff for this item and all your work on this neighborhood initiative item that we all agreed to set aside a relatively small amount of money in the budget year, I think it was two years ago. And this is, yes, it's relatively small, but this is funding projects that are, I think, really important to some of these communities, largely around some of the aesthetics in these communities, and crucial ways to close gaps in sidewalks and other things that may seem small to a lot of us but mean a lot to these communities in terms of their identity and their pride and their kind of sense of place. So just want to thank staff for this, and, you know, I would look forward to doing something else like this maybe in the future. Not going to be asking about it this budget year, David, I'm just telling you that. But your efforts are appreciated.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any other Supervisors? Seeing none, is there any member of the public that would like to comment on any item on the consent calendar? Seeing and hearing none, is there a motion? We have multiple moves in seconds, so Alma, it's up to you.
And the motion carries by unanimous vote to approve consent items 2 through 41.
Thank you. Next item, please.
I'm sorry, that was 2 through 42. Item number 43 is a presentation of resolution declaring May 2024 as Lyme Disease Awareness Month.
Thank you. Is Melissa Moya in the House? Yes, thank you.
So we are here today because we haven't heard enough about mosquitoes and vectors. But actually, in all seriousness, Lyme disease is a complex, multi-system illness that is often misunderstood and underappreciated as far as its seriousness, and it can cause serious health problems if not caught early and properly treated. Usually, the disease responds well to prompt treatment with appropriate antibiotics. If untreated or inadequately treated, Lyme disease can invade patients through multiple organs of the body, including the brain, the nervous system, and in those instances, patients can become increasingly disabled over time, suffering crippling muscle and joint pain, neurological impairment, psychological disorders, and a host of other symptoms that can lead to financial hardship, job loss, broken families, increased numbers of people on disability or welfare, and even death. So as I, you know, lightheartedly introduce the item, this is a very serious item that I'm proud to say that the county of Sacramento takes very seriously. And with that, I will give you the podium.
I'm Melissa Moya from Lyme Foundation here in Sacramento. Thank you so much again for recognizing May as Lyme Awareness Month. I am a Lyme patient, and that's why I started my foundation. It took me three years to find out what was wrong, and the average test that you get misses 65%. First-year treatment costs me $30,000, and I'm starting year four, so it's not covered by insurance other than two weeks of doxycycline. So it's very important for us to get awareness out, to save others from it, and also to hopefully find a way to get better testing and some insurance for it as well.
Thank you so much, and thank you for sharing your personal experience, and thank you for the work that you do in the community. We appreciate it. So with that...
Thank you. Do you mind taking... Sorry.
We're good at this.
Do you mind doing one for me? I'm sorry, I'm the only one here today.
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you. I just brought this for you guys for the office.
Thank you.
All right. Should I take that? Okay. Thank you.
Next item.
Item number 44, I am requesting, staff is requesting that you drop this item, please.
So moved. We have a motion. A second, please, vote.
I'm so sorry, I was too fast.
You were.
So sorry. Unanimous vote. Item number 45, May is, May 2024 is Mental Health Awareness Month presentation.
Dr. Quist.
Good morning. Morning, Chair, Kennedy, and Supervisors. I'm Ryan Quist, the Behavioral Health Director. Mental Health Awareness Month is observed every May to increase awareness about the vital role mental health plays in our overall health and well-being, provide resources and information to assist individuals and communities who may need mental health support. Today actually is my five-year anniversary with Sacramento County, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank each of you, all of you, for your very persistent and enduring support of mental health and behavioral health. It is extremely appreciated. The community is definitely better off from your support. I also see that you're all wearing your lime-green ribbons today to support Mental Health Awareness Month, so thank you for that as well. This observance also reminds us to reach out and provide support to colleagues, friends, family, and loved ones who may be struggling in silence. Each of us can positively impact the lives of those around us and within our broader community by simply starting a conversation and offering words of encouragement, kindness, and help. Whether we're navigating personal challenges or grappling with the constant barrage of local and global calamities, we continually confront various stressors that impact our mental well-being. We must prioritize both our mental health and our physical health, not only during May, but throughout the entire year. On behalf of the Department of Health Services, we want to thank you for your support of Mental Health Awareness Month and the Mental Illness It's Not Always What You Think Project. For over a decade, Sacramento County's Mental Illness It's Not Always What You Think Project has been dedicated to reducing stigma, raising mental health awareness, and inspiring hope within our community through the Stop Stigma Sacramento multimedia campaign, which has become a model program for other local governments in California and elsewhere. The project's goal is to shift negative attitudes and perceptions about mental illness by replacing myths and stereotypes with stories of healing, wellness, and hope for the over 300,000 Sacramento County residents who are living with mental illness. We've touched millions through advertising, news coverage, digital and social media, local events, partnerships, and presentations by our Stop Stigma Sacramento County Speakers Bureau. And each year, the project reaches thousands of county residents from diverse backgrounds, cultures, and ethnicities. I'm going to be introducing you to one of our Speakers Bureau members in just a moment who will share her experience living with a mental illness. Many of you have participated in the project's events and have spread the word to your constituents about the project and reducing stigma. We are grateful for the Board's commitment to serve the Sacramento County community by supporting this anti-stigma project and our efforts to provide exceptional behavioral health and health education services. And now, I'd like to introduce Laura Bemis to you. In addition to being a member of our Speakers Bureau, Laura is a longtime advocate, stakeholder, and mental health board member that has dedicated her own personal time to contributing valuable feedback to help us make improvements to our programs and services. I'd like to thank Laura today for her willingness to join us and to share her story.
Thank you, Dr. Quist. And before the amazing Laura comes to the podium, I would like to say congratulations on your five years. I don't know many public servants who are more dedicated and committed to an area as you are, and so I really, we appreciate everything you do. Thank you. Ms. Bemis.
Thank you, Dr. Quist. Madam Clerk? Good afternoon. Or I guess it's morning still. So, mental illness is not always what you think. I've been diagnosed with every mental illness over the years, except for obsessive-compulsive disorder and bipolar. Right now, I'm being treated for DID, or what's called dissociative identity disorder, which used to be called multiple personality disorder. I don't fully understand my disorder, but I'm learning about it through therapy. I've learned three key symptoms of DID. DID is feeling disconnected from yourself, forgetting about certain time periods, and not feeling certain about who you are. I have these symptoms daily, and I switch, or change, alters or personalities, daily. Growing up, I had a very dysfunctional family. I had two sisters. One was manic-depressive, or now called bipolar, and the other was undiagnosed, but I believe she lived with depression. However, I was the one considered mentally ill because I was in and out of medical and psychiatric hospitals. I also went through five years of electroconvulsive therapy, or ECT, also known as shock treatment. During that time, I lost most of my childhood memories, but retained the traumas I'd grown up with. Still, there was a part of me that never gave up hope for a better future. I lost both my parents to cancer in 2006 and 2010, and my two siblings became less self-sufficient. The loss of my parents did not bring me closer to my sisters, but it did help me realize that all we had was each other in the family. Both of my sisters lived in a small town in the northern part of Oregon. However, at the end of 2013 and the beginning of 2014, both of my sisters took their own lives. That fast, I was alone. Luckily, in 2012, I found Stop Stigma Sacramento and the National Alliance on Mental Illness, or NAMI. I began building friendships through the Speakers Bureau. The Speakers Bureau has given me a family of people who understand me and don't judge me. I began to recover, and now the support team that I keep keeps me in check and holds me accountable for my actions. This support team of fellow speakers, a spiritual counselor, and my therapist have helped me tremendously. The spiritual counselor helps me stay spiritually alive, and the therapist is helping me with daily living and behavioral changes. The Speakers Bureau gives me hope. If I have a bad day, I can call one of my new Speaker Bureau family members and get support. Through the Speakers Bureau, I have learned the importance of empathetic listening, and so have my fellow speakers. And sometimes, that's all I need, is someone to listen to me and not judge me and just gets what I'm going through. Each time I speak, I get a little more hopeful for myself, and in the process, I hopefully educate others to the damage the stigma of mental illness can inflict on a person. I hope that sharing my story begins to change the negative perception of mental illness and open people's minds. If I can plant the seed of change in one person's behavior or thought about the mental ill community, I have succeeded. The Speakers Bureau has not only given me a family, decreased my own stigma, but has helped me realize that although my story is unique to me, there are others who struggle too, and we're all looking for mental wellness. I've learned over the years to change my language and how to express myself without using triggering or stigmatizing language. For example, I prefer to say that I have a mental health challenge rather than I'm mentally ill. This is a small change and may not be noticed by others. This is a small change and may not be noticed by others, but it's a way I can feel more hopeful in my recovery. I actually like a challenge, and I know I can continue to strive to overcome a challenge. However, an illness seems like it's out of my control to get into recovery. I also try to avoid using the word consumer. The consumer word sounds to me like someone who takes and takes and takes and doesn't give back. In my work, I prefer to use the word client, member, peer, or beneficiary of services. Oh, and by the way, I've only worked part-time all of my life since I graduated from high school. I was on Social Security Disability from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand and twenty-two. In July of two thousand twenty-two, I started working full-time for the first time in my life. I'm now a Certified Medi-Cal Peer Support Specialist, and that's a big deal for me. I never thought I would recover enough to work full-time. I've gained opportunities to tell others they are not alone in their struggles. It's very rewarding for me, and I am now a supervisor of other peers. One last thing I'd like to share is I'm one of the founders of the Sacramento County Art Exhibit that pairs local artists and writers to share their story of hope and recovery and give others insight, understanding, and strength while raising mental health awareness. I gave you all a card, and that art exhibit is called Journey of Hope. I hope to see you all at the reception on October fifth. I hope my story has brought you some hope and helped you see that someone with a mental health challenge a little differently than what you may have seen before I started speaking. To get more information on the Speakers' Bureau, you can always go to StopStigmaSacramento.org and look us up, and thank you very much for having me today and letting me speak.
Thank you, Laura. Don't leave the podium because there's a couple of supervisors that have chimed in here, or will, and I just want to say that as somebody who's worked with you personally over the years, you have represented two districts in Sacramento County, and I know that it's, through your comments, you've said it's important not to be judged, but I'm going to judge you, and my judgment is that you have done more for mental health than just about anybody I know in this community, so thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you. So first of all, Laura, I just want to thank you for your remarks. It's not often that you can hear a pin drop when people are at the podium in these chambers, and I think that's something to be proud of because that means everyone is listening very intently to what you have to share. And what you've had to share, I know, may be difficult in terms of your personal experience, but the fact that you have achieved what you have, and congratulations, by the way, on working full-time.
Thank you.
I think that's phenomenal, but I think it's left us all this morning with a lot of self-reflection about not just our own mental health challenges, but how we interact with those that are around us, whether they be family, coworkers, friends, and to remind ourselves that just because someone may have those challenges, they ought not to be treated any differently than if someone has a physical ailment. And so I think that's, it's just very laudable that someone with the depth of perseverance that you have is now engaged full-time in making sure that people know that they're not alone when it comes to their own challenges. So again, thank you for being here and sharing.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. So first of all, I'm really resisting the urge to joke about being kept awake at night over not being diagnosed obsessive-compulsive, but mental health is no joking matter, so I will resist that urge. But I just want to say, Laura, I mean, we've known each other probably over twenty years, knew your dad, and it speaks to not only the stigma of talking about mental illness, but also how elusive it can be for others to really know what's going on. I mean, we've all seen, whether it's the, you know, big circle with a dot in it about what you know about someone's life, or the iceberg where you just see the tip and there's so much more below the water that you don't see, and I say that because I hope you take some solace in knowing that you have always presented yourself as a very kind, open, hard-working, very capable person, and to not know the struggles you're dealing with behind the scenes, really, as was said, you know, it's obviously the physical disability is much more visible and, you know, doesn't require so much quote-unquote explanation. And so, you know, congratulations on full-time employment. Thank you so much for the work that you're doing to hopefully, you know, flatten the curve for other folks that are going through peaks and valleys and struggles, and just keep it up. And for those of you that don't know, Laura is an amazing photographer, and it was great seeing you at the Festival of the Arts last weekend, or weekend before, whenever that was. So go check out the gallery. Also, she's featured in a book called Faces of Mental Illness. Her story is told, and she did a great job writing that as well. Thank you.
Thank you all. It's sometimes more difficult to talk when people, I know people, than when I don't know you at all, so.
Don't go away.
Okay, I won't. I listen.
And you make a good billboard, too, by the way. Supervisor Desmond.
Yeah, still two more of us, but I'll be brief. Thank you so much for being here, Laura. I mean, you have done so much to remove the stigma and help people both identify and confront behavioral health challenges and help them heal from them, and certainly cope with them, and bringing attention to this is invaluable for our community. So I just want to thank you very much for being here today. You truly are an inspiration.
Thank you.
Supervisor Frost, and this will tell you that it's rare that all five chime in, so here you go.
Well, I appreciate it.
Hi, Laura. I haven't met you, but I just want to say that your story is so compelling. You're like the embodiment of hope and light for others who feel like they're in the dark and don't know how to work their way through or navigate. You're showing that it can be done, but also it's so helpful for all of us to hear your story and have a better understanding. It's heartbreaking that you had to go through all that loss and navigate personal challenges at the same time, but you're like, you're like a hero, and I believe personally that every one of us are put here for a reason, that God gives us a purpose here, and you have obviously a really important purpose, and I want to, I just wanted to tell you that you're an inspiration to me.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor. You can go now.
Oh.
Dr. Quist, is that it? Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number forty-six is a presentation of the 4H Program and Approved Renewal Agreement for a multi-county partnership between the counties of Sacramento, Yolo, and Solano, and the regions of the University of California for Cooperative Extension Program Services.
Good morning, Supervisors, and thank you for having us today. My name is Jen Hankins, and I'm the 4H Regional Program Coordinator from the UC Cooperative Extension Program here in Sacramento, as well as Solano and Yolo Counties.
And my name is Mary Ann Byrd. I'm the 4H Youth Development Advisor here in Sacramento County.
So prior to two thousand fourteen, cooperative extension was a county department. Since then, we have consolidated as a multi-county partnership with Sacramento, Solano, and Yolo Counties for greater efficiency. Sacramento County generously supports our local programming through a longstanding agreement. This county funding is amplified and leveraged by university funding and other community resources. 4H is one of many cooperative extension programs, including everything from nutrition education, master gardener programs, natural resource, and agriculture. Like other organizations, the pandemic was detrimental to our programs, but we have emerged strong and see growth in all of our areas. Today, we want to share, we're excited to share, the wide range of programs we have for you in Sacramento. So first, we're going to talk about our club program. And the 4H Club Program, do I advance? Oh, sorry. There we go. The 4H Club Program is what most people think of when we talk about 4H. The county fair, cows, cooking, are all familiar phrases. While we continue to offer those traditional experiences, our clubs have grown to be unique expressions of each community in which they reside. Our clubs are widespread throughout the county, from our Green Acres 4H Club that meets in Alberta at Gibson Ranch, to our brand-new chartered club, All Kids Habitat 4H Club, in the Fruit Ridge-Freport area. We have fourteen clubs that serve over seven hundred youth, and the number continues to increase since the pandemic. Our volunteer numbers remain steady, including two hundred, with seventy-five new volunteers being added this year. Our volunteers, many who have been with us for decades, a few decades, are dedicated to serving youth in their clubs. They teach about project skills, leadership, and community service. What makes the club program so special is the longevity of adults and the youth that they serve. We know that caring relationships is paramount to the youth development for our kids. In Sacramento, 4H has served in expanded learning for almost three decades. Expanded learning programs are funded primarily through the California Department of Education and provide academic support and enrichment in schools, particularly those with highest need. Though not optimal, during the pandemic, we were able to offer many programs in either a virtual or a hybrid model. The following three programs are all delivered during the expanded learning time in schools across the county. Our longest-standing program is the Youth Experiences in Science Project, which we've consistently delivered since nineteen ninety-eight. This program recruits and trains teenagers who deliver the weekly hands-on science sessions to young elementary school youth. In the YES Project, teens don't give answers, but they facilitate discovery and building knowledge through experiential learning. Worms, bubbles, and snails are just a few of the units that capture the interest and enthusiasm of the children. Teenagers are also developing skills and awareness as they plan and deliver their lessons. These teens are recruited from local high schools, fill out an application, are interviewed, and then receive ten hours of training before working as a team to deliver their lessons. They build confidence, leadership, and workforce readiness through this process. We currently work in partnership with Elk Grove Unified School District and Sacramento City Unified School District to operate YES at the sites most in need of this enrichment. The 4H Cooking Academy is the newest of our programs, born during the pandemic when teens were yearning for meaningful activity. It began as a virtual program in two thousand twenty, but has since emerged as a very popular cooking and nutrition education project. Like YES, this program mobilizes teenagers who conduct the six-week program. Older, elementary-aged youth prepare, cook, and try new foods. The teens gain the same workforce readiness skills, interviewing, teamwork, public speaking, as our YES teens. The program has always been delivered in Elk Grove Unified School District in partnership with Cooperative Extension Nutrition Education, and this year, we've expanded to the Twin Rivers Unified School District at Rio Linda Prep.
Our final expanded learning program is 4H Water Wizards. Water is a critical and limited natural resource, and our 4H Water Wizards project teaches fourth through sixth-grade students about water and its importance to our planet. Drought, flooding, pollution, water quality, 4H Water Wizards prepares youth to understand and make responsible decisions concerning these water issues and this valuable resource. Delivered by the expanded learning staff, the twelve-week curriculum includes lessons about watersheds, pollution, and different water properties. The project culminates in a service-learning project that the youth design and implement, as well as a field trip to the American River Water Education Center. The 4H Water Wizards program partners with Sacramento City Unified School District and Elk Grove City Unified School District, as well as the American River Water Education Center. 4H on the Wild Side brings environmental education and outdoor living experiences to fourth through sixth graders who have limited opportunity to explore wild places or sleep under the stars. Participants grow in their knowledge and understanding of the natural world, they expand their appreciation for conservation and environmental stewardship, and they deepen their enthusiasm for nature. Again, this program relies on the energy of teen teachers who work for several months to design and then deliver the weekend-long program held at Camp Gold Hollow in Nevada City. Sacramento County teachers and schools partner with 4H to bring their students to the camp. The beauty of this program lies in the aha moments that come when students net tadpoles in the lake, marvel at the towering ponderosa pines, or view the Milky Way for the very first time. For many of our kids, 4H Resident Camp is the best week of the summer. 4H teen counselors with adult support begin planning in January for this week-long program that takes place in June. Traditional camp activities like archery, canoeing, or campfires, along with being away from home, fosters independence and personal responsibility for youth of all ages. And finally, for youth not quite ready for sleepaway camp, we have resurrected our 4H Day Camp, which takes place at Riverbend Park in Rancho Cordova. Our campers, some as young as five years old, arrive daily to participate in group activities and spend the day with their favorite teen counselor. Youth go home happy, if tired and dirty, and with excitement to return for the next day's adventure. A robust planning committee comprised of both teen and adult volunteers orchestrates this week-long event. Many community partners augment camps, arts, and crafts, and nature activities, and this would include the Sacramento History Museum, SMUD, Sacramento County Parks, our own California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and the UCC Sacramento CalFresh Healthy Living Project. We would like for you to meet the team of professionals who oversee this multitude of 4H programming here in the county. They include Burl Johnson, who oversees all of our programs with our expanded learning partners. That includes the 4H YES Project, the Cooking Academy, and our Water Wizards Project. Michelle Ross, who is our newest member of our 4H team, who works extensively with 4H volunteers and oversees our club and camp programs. And finally, Nancy Grillich, who keeps everything together in our office. She is our administrative support for all of our cooperative extension programs here in the county. Thank you for allowing us to share a little bit about 4H with you today, and we would welcome any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. I see that we have at least one supervisor has punched in, but before that, I will say that, you know, as a 4H family myself, and recognizing what the 4Hs stand for, it's a program that's underestimated by so many people, and what I particularly am interested in is that I believe that if you were to poll most people and say, you know, what's 4H? It's in Mr. Hume's district. But seriously.
Very accurate.
But you're actually, you know, far beyond that, and in inner cities throughout the country, and so I really appreciate what you do. It's kind of like the way I look at the first T golf program. It's not about golf, it's about what they teach to make a person a whole person, and that's what 4H is about. So I thank you so much. Mr. Hume.
Well, thank you for that, Chair, and you kind of stole my thunder because that's exactly what I want to say, is a lot of people look at 4H the same way they would look at the Cub Scouts versus the Boy Scouts, as though it's a feeder program into FFA, and it's a completely standalone program that, again, works on the individual and their connection to the natural world, whether that be through ag and ag science, or through the water conservation or exploration. And so that understanding and that connection, and the idea that our food does not come neatly wrapped in plastic when it enters this world, right? It grows in a field somewhere, either on the hoof, or on a tree, or whatever. And so, but to the point that was made by the chair, what I really appreciate about 4H is what it does for the character of the individual. It just makes better people out of these kids, and so thank you for that work, and obviously, thank you for the work of the Cooperative Extension.
You all nailed it. It is not about, like my husband says, it's not about the swine, it's about the kid. It's about raising that youth up in that difficult space where you're having to learn about another being and its health and well-being. So thank you so much. We appreciate you having us here today.
Thank you. Well said, and by the way, the swine still tastes good. Supervisor Frost.
Supervisor Frost.
I just wanted to say, I also have had the privilege of supporting the 4H in the Rio Linda area, which is in my district, and I'm so impressed with the young people who participate in these programs. They learn not only about commitment, and they learn about business planning, and compassion, and, you know, being consistent in caring for their animal. And it's real fun when they come to visit me in my office, and I get to ask them, okay, what's the difference between raising turkeys or chickens? And we get to have the real down and dirty, you know, some are easier than others. And I think it's really great that they learn these life skills so young, and I think it'll give them a head start, so I appreciate the leadership that you all have shown in working with these young adults and students. So I love 4H, and I'm going to be visiting you at the state fair this year.
Thank you. Our Green Acres Club in Alberta has really, in the last few years, they have a very dynamic group of volunteers there that really have brought a lot of energy to the north, to our north county with our club program, so thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Next item, please.
Item number 46, oh, sorry, item number 47, is the County Service Area Number One, Zone One Public Hearing on the Benefit Category Change and Levy of Increased Service Charge for 2222 Watt Avenue.
You are not Joe.
I am not Joe. I'm practicing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I wanted to try this.
I'm so sorry, Chairperson Kennedy, on item number 46, I did need a vote on that item. There's still action to be taken.
Oh, just the receiving file?
It's not just the receiving file, it's to approve the attached interlock agreement.
Right. I'll move the item. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
No, I appreciate my colleagues helping me here.
And the motion carries by unanimous vote. Thank you. I'm so sorry for that.
I got caught up in the moment.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Don Pimentel with County Engineering. The 2222 Watt Avenue project is located northeast of the intersection of Watt Avenue and Cody Way, and consists of the construction of a 2,200-square-foot Starbucks with drive-thru and associated improvements. This project was approved with the use permit and special development permit on March 7, 2024. In response to the condition of approval required prior to the building permit issuance, the project proponent submitted an application to initiate the benefit category change process. In response to that request, a ballot and notice was mailed to the property owner on March 22. Currently, the project is a single parcel in a safety light-only benefit category and is assessed $2.56 annually. The proposed change is to change to the enhanced street and safety light, non-residential category, with an annual assessment of approximately $567.06 for the 584 feet of public frontage. If there are no questions from the board, we recommend that the board open the public hearing, consider written and oral testimony, and objections and protests, and close the public hearing, and then direct the clerk to tabulate the returned protest ballot.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none, I will open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board at this time on this item? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing, and would the clerk please tabulate the votes?
Received one ballot. The legal owner is Berry Yesa Partners LLC, located at 2222 Watt Avenue, Sacramento, California, 95825, and the ballot is marked yes.
Thank you. Then please read into the record.
Thank you. Since there is no majority protest, we request that the board adopt the attached resolution to establish the service charge for 2222 Watt Avenue, and I would like to read into record the fill-ins in the resolution. Section 2, at the close of tabulation, the board received zero oral and written protests, which the board has duly considered. Thank you. Section 3, at the close of tabulation, the board received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total amount to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the service charge and 0% was in opposition to the service charge.
Thank you. Second? We have a motion and a second.
Unanimous vote.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tell Joey better be careful. Next item, please.
Item number 48 is the County Service Area One Conduct Public Hearing on the Fiscal Year 2425 Service Charges, Confirm Engineer's Report, and Adopt the Resolution Setting Service Charges for Fiscal Year 2425.
Good morning. Kamala Atwell with the SAC DOT, Operations and Maintenance, Principal Civil Engineer. Will be discussing the CSA One Proposed Service Charges for Fiscal Year 2425. So CSA One funds the maintenance and operations and electrical costs for safety and streetlights in the unincorporated Sacramento County. Standard rates were frozen since the passage of Prop 218 in November of 1996. In 2006, enhanced and decorative service charges were adopted with the inflation provisions. Inflation factors are based on a higher of either CPI index or smart electrical rate increases, and also capped at 5%. This year, we have 2.6% CPI increase, and SMUD was increasing their electrical rates by 5.5%, therefore, we are capping the rates at 5% for fiscal year 2425. Proposed service charge comparisons are shown in the board letter on page 2. Top three rows are fixed rates, those are for the Prop 218, and then the bottom four rows are inflated by 5%. We have a total of 27,059 safety and streetlights that are funded by CSA One, owned by state, county, and SMUD. County owns 25,000 of those streetlights, safety and streetlights. 92% of our inventory is converted to LED. We have remaining 1,873 streetlights that still needs LED retrofits. Last year, 274 LED retrofits were completed by our staff. LED retrofits are incrementally done as the funding becomes available to reduce the energy cost and reduce the service intervals. So staff recommends opening the public hearing for the proposed service charges for 2425 as set forth in the engineer's report.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
No.
Seeing and hearing none, I will open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board on this item at this time? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Move to substaff recommendation.
Motion and a second. Please vote.
Thank you.
And the motion carries by unanimous vote.
Next item.
Item number 49. San Juan Apartments, a mutual housing, acting as the Board of Supervisors and the Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento for this item. San Juan Apartments, a mutual housing community, conduct a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing, approved $21.5 million in loan documents with San Juan Mutual Housing Associates, LP, approval to execute documents, amend budget, and allocate $2.6 million of county home investment partnership funds, $5.25 million of county housing trust funds, $4.75 million of state local housing trust funds, $2 million of green means-go funding, $1.7 million of permanent local housing allocation funds, and $5.2 million in affordable housing ordinance funds to the project. Approval of $123,000 in seller carry back loans funds for the project, accept green means-go funds, and approve a funding agreement for the project, and authorize multifamily housing revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $50 million for the project.
Madam Clerk, that's one of the longest introductions ever, but you could read that all day long to me, because it's music to my ears.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. My name is Whitney Hinton, Program Manager with SHRA. Staff is requesting approval of the final loan and bond documents, and to add $2 million of the green means-go funds to San Juan Apartments, a mutual housing community. You previously approved $20 million loan commitment in February of last year. In addition to the final loan documents approvals, staff is requesting approval to allocate an additional $2 million of green means-go funds to the project for infrastructure. San Juan Apartments is a new construction multifamily workforce family project located at the corner of Stockton Boulevard and Young Street. It will be 113 units that consist of ones, twos, and three bedrooms, ranging from 30% to 60% of area median income. Mutual Housing California is the developer, property manager, and resident service provider. SHRA has owned this land for many years and is excited that construction will begin next month. In closing, staff is requesting approval of the final loan documents, bond documents, and approval of the green means-go funds to San Juan Apartments and Mutual Housing Community, and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board? I will simply say that this is a great moment for South Sacramento. This is huge. Thank you. Any member of the public would like to address the board at the time on this item? Hearing none. Board Chair will move approval, and we have a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Next item.
Your next item is at 10:45. Would you like to take your nominations?
Let's do that.
And I'll read slow. I don't know if I can read that slow. Your nominations are item number 52. You are continuing to June 4, the Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council, the Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council, Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Board, Public Health Advisory Board, Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission. And then you are continuing to June 11, Adult and Aging Commission, County Service Area Number C, Delta, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Disability Advisory Commission, Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, Human Services Coordinating Council, Recreation and Parks Commission. For today's items, you have the Carmichael Recreation and Park District. Mr. Desmond.
Found my notes. Thank you. So we're at District 3.
I think it's Mr. Desmond.
Yeah, thank you.
Please continue to May 21.
Thank you. Casumnis Area Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to June 11.
Okay, and Supervisor Hume? Thank you. Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to June 4.
Thank you. Sacramento County Mental Health Board.
Please continue to June 11.
Thank you. Sacramento County Youth Commission.
District 2, continue to June 4.
Okay.
And District 3, please continue to June 11.
District 4, please nominate Brooklyn Pruitt.
Thank you. Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council.
District 2, continue to June 4.
Thank you.
District 5, continue to June 11, please.
Thank you. And that concludes your nominations.
We will take a brief recess.
For item, for item number 50, you are, this is a supportive and group living uses zoning code amendment, a zoning ordinance amendment to amend Chapters 3 and 7 of the Sacramento County Zoning Code related to supportive and group living uses countywide. The planning and environmental review is the applicant, and the environmental document is an addendum to the Certified Final Environmental Impact Report of the general plan.
Thank you. Morning.
Good morning. Wendy Hartman, Principal Planner with Planning and Environmental Review. Let's see here. All right. So this zoning code amendment is primarily funded through a 2019 Local Early Action Planning Grant, and the purpose of this grant is to aid local jurisdictions in streamlining housing production. This specific component of the grant is specifically related to zoning code updates related to supportive housing and group living uses. The proposed amendments are broken into three groups. The first group are amendments to ensure that our zoning code is in compliance with state legislation. Group 2 are amendments to various group living definitions, and the last group is related to farmworker housing, and I'll go over each of these in more detail. So this first set of amendments are related to bringing the zoning code into compliance with state law, specifically Government Code Sections 65583 and 65651. These laws require that local jurisdictions treat supportive and transitional housing in the same manner as any other residential uses of the same type, with a few minor exceptions pertaining to mandated criteria for multifamily projects. To implement these changes, we are proposing amendments to Table 3.1, Chapter 3 Use Standards, and Chapter 7 Definitions. So I've provided a little information on what the difference between transitional and supportive housing is. For transitional housing, it means that it is a rental housing development that requires termination of the assistance and reuse of that assisted unit to another eligible participant within a specified period of time, but the specified period of time must be at least six months. On the other hand, supportive housing has no limit on the length of stay. It is occupied by a target population and is linked to either onsite or offsite services that assist the resident in retaining housing, improving their health status, and maximizing their ability, and in some cases, to even work in our community. And for purposes of supportive housing legislation, supportive services include, but are not limited to, a combination of subsidized permanent housing, intensive case management, medical and/or mental health care, substance abuse treatment, employment services, and benefit So this slide right here is a snapshot of our use table 3.1, and I apologize that the zone districts are not at the top of the table, but since state law requires supportive and transitional housing to be treated in the same manner as other residential use types, the use table indicates that in certain zones, a different level of entitlement is needed, and that matches up with other sections of our zoning code pertaining to single-family homes, duplexes, and multifamily projects. So for example, if you look at the second or far-right arrow, that is our BP zone. And in our BP zone, single-family residential uses require approval of a minor use permit or UPM, and multifamily projects over 10 units require approval of a use permit from the zoning administrator or UPZ. So for example, if you had a single-family home in the BP zone, it wouldn't matter if that home was being used by a single-family household, or supportive housing, both would require the minor use permit. So once again, I just want to make the board and the public aware that the zoning code changes being proposed related to supportive and transitional housing are just those that are necessary to meet state law. So staff is not proposing any changes that would go beyond the minimum requirements of state law. So at the planning.
Chair. Wendy, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's a very critical point, as far as me wrapping my head around all of this.
No problem.
Can you repeat that? Nothing being proposed is in excess of what is required by state law?
Correct. From our, from our working with HCD and County Council, we are only proposing amendments that would make our code in compliance with the requirements of state law, and we're not going beyond those requirements.
And that has both to do with the zoning designations, as well as with the level of scrutiny as far as minor use permit versus zoning administrator?
Correct. Yes. So that's where if, in my example, if a single-family household requires a minor use permit, and that same dwelling unit is being used for supportive or transitional housing permit and that same dwelling unit is being used for supportive or transitional housing, it also requires a minor use permit. Now, if that single-family home is permitted by right, then we also have to allow that supportive housing or transitional housing to be allowed by right.
Okay, and so then, since we're paused here, I'll just take a little bit of liberty. With respect to an ag rez zone, it talks about, you know, accessory residential dwellings as permitted. Is the as permitted portion of that caveat related to our own zoning code, or is this again coming as a mandate from, from state law?
It's within our own zoning code. So wherever in our zoning code we're allowing that single-family home or that accessory dwelling unit, then we need to treat those zones and those types of uses the same regardless of whether they're being used for an individual family or supportive housing or transitional housing purposes.
Okay. Final question, and then I see another supervisor's punched in here. And so then with that sort of six clients or 10 clients threshold, is that per dwelling unit? And where I'm going with this is if you have, you know, an AR2 or an AR5 parcel that has some space around it and people start plopping new units on there, how, what's the maximum number of clients we would?
So I think you've, your question about the 10, I think that relates to the provision on scattered shelters versus support, supportive housing. Am I, am I correct?
Sure.
Okay. So I'll be talking about scattered shelters a little bit later on in my presentation.
Okay.
For supportive housing and transitional housing, we are not allowed to limit the number of residents because we do not limit the number of residents that can live in, that can comprise a household. Like, we do not tell people you can have only two children or three children. So in that same manner, we cannot restrict the number of people that occupy a dwelling used for supportive or transitional housing.
Okay, but I would assume Health and Safety Code, something else would say this is the maximum number of occupancy per dwelling unit? I'm trying to get to what is the, the maximum scenario wherein, in a rural area, these would be the number of clients being serviced on this property?
So the zoning code doesn't get into building code compliance, so I can't specifically, that's a little bit outside of my lane.
Okay.
But my assumption would be that if there is a family that has eight children, the building code is not treating that structure any differently than they would a household that has only three children. It would be my assumption, but someone from the building department would have to confirm that. So in the same manner, we can't differentiate from a blood-related family unit and a supportive or transitional housing unit.
Hmm, okay.
And then if you have further questions on the scattered shelter, I'll get to those a little bit later.
Okay. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you. Thank you, Wendy, and I will have some follow-up on the scattered site shelter.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify, I mean, the, coming into compliance and mirroring state law in our zoning code is only, as it relates to transitional supportive housing. I mean, the scattered site discussion we're going to have in a few moments is kind of above and beyond that.
Correct.
Okay. And then, but, and since you're on this slide and we'd already stopped, I had some discussions with Todd yesterday about this and appreciate, you know, staff's work about this. Explain to me, what was the Planning Commission, what was their mindset? What were they getting at here?
They had concerns with the fact that there are no limitations on the number of residents. So unlike residential care homes, which do have some provisions under state law, our proposed scatter shelter housing, we can't limit the number of people within a supportive or transitional housing project. And so they were concerned about large numbers of people, vehicles, and so they were looking for ways that they could have some control over the size of these facilities. And the only way to do that would also be to have those same exact provisions for any other dwelling unit. So it would restrict, you know, and then that's where we start to, in discussions with HCD guidance and County Council, start to get a little bit worried about, are we creating policies that could be viewed as discriminatory or in violation of the Fair Housing Act or trying to regulate the number of, of children a family can have? So when you try to regulate those sites, sorts of things, we do so with caution. There's, there's been jurisdictions that have run afoul of some, some state and federal provisions when trying to restrict those sorts of things.
Okay. That makes sense. Again, I'll, a few more follow-up, but it sounds like to me, so the Planning Commission basically was saying, if we have to comply with state law, we have to treat them like we treat any other single-family residents. Let's put, impose those restrictions on every single family residence in the county.
Correct.
Okay, so that's kind of what they were getting at?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so like, maximum of, you can't have more than six people in a home, or yeah, restricting the size of the home, or that sort of thing.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so, let's see. Did I go the right direction? Yes, I did. Okay. So moving on, this next set of revisions is intended to help further clarify a lot of our group living uses and distinguish between the different types of uses, like a single-family household and a boarding house. And also to update terminology, we have some really antiquated terms, and so where we could, we wanted to better align them with some of the terminology used by the state for these types of group homes. So the amendments are revising definitions and use standards. We also are incorporating medically assisted withdrawal or detoxification services because those are not currently addressed in our zoning code, and we do get a lot of inquiries and, and different things related to those types of uses, and then removing any duplicative So this slide right here provides a summary of the specific changes proposed by topic. And as I'm sure most of you are aware, the county does have a rental housing inspection program, or RHIP, and one of the issues that we often encounter in working with the RHIP staff is being able to distinguish a home that's being used as a single-family household that's being rented, a residential care home, or a boarding house. And boarding houses, we tend to regulate a little more strictly. They're a little bit more transient in nature. They often have more vehicle traffic and noise and other potential issues associated with them. However, based on our definition right now of single household and boarding house, it's very difficult for county staff to be able to distinguish between the two. We've also had issues with some folks, even though they're clearly operating a boarding house, we have provisions in our current definition that say for-profit business, and they're claiming, well, I'm not charging rent, or I'm not making a profit, or whatever. So we worked with our code enforcement staff to better clarify the difference between a single-family household unit and a boarding house. And one of the most significant changes that we're proposing is that a boarding house is where there's at least two or more individual leases. We're getting rid of the for-profit portion. And the idea behind that is that in most cases, boarding houses are individuals who have their own separate lease from other folks renting that dwelling unit, and they have no really relationship or ties to one another. And so that is different from either a family household or even a single household unit which could have roommate situation, where roommates, you typically pick who you're living with, you live together kind of as a, a, a single household unit. And most importantly, if you are renting, there's a single lease for that property versus individual leases for a room or just a portion of the property you're allowed to use. The next change is regarding residential care homes, where both the definition and use standards would be modified specifically to include sober living facilities. We're silent on that, and state law requires that at least on the six or fewer, they are treated in the same manner as a single-family use. And so we're, we, in practice, we've been including them under our residential care homes, so this just codifies that action and makes us consistent with state law. The amendment also clarifies that residential care homes must be residential in character, and I'll go through that definition in a minute, and that facilities with over six residents that are proposing more intensive medical services, whether that's skilled nursing, memory care, or detoxification services, or other medically intensive services, we will not consider those as being a residential care home. They're more institutional in nature.
To the chair. Yes.
Wendy, and that last, what you just mentioned, that was also as a result of some feedback from the Planning Commission, correct? That last?
Planning Commission, CPAC groups.
Okay.
Various communications that we receive on a regular basis from constituents through our general email and, and what have you, yes.
Okay, thank you.
As I mentioned just a minute ago, our code does not address medically assisted withdrawal or detoxification services, so we're adding that into our zoning code. We do have to allow facilities that serve six or fewer by right because the state does require that those smaller facilities be treated as a single-family use, just like the sober living. However, if they're serving more than six residents, we will either classify them as a convalescent hospital, a rehabilitation center, or one of those more in intensive types of, of facilities. And their classification will depend on the level, the level of care they're receiving, the amount of time they're staying there, so whether it's a short-term stay, long-term, they need, you know, ongoing life care sort of, sort of situations. And we worked through that with Melinda Avery, who is, serves on the Drug and Alcohol Advisory Board, and she was very helpful in giving us a lot of really good information on the difference between detoxification service facilities and your more sober living types of, types of facilities. And then lastly, we're proposing some minor changes to the definition of congregate care, convalescent hospital, and social rehabilitation centers. So residential in character. So currently, our zoning code in a few places uses the term non-institutional in character, but we don't define that. And staff looked for a zoning-related definition, and we really weren't able to come up with one. It's one of those terms we use where you know it when you see it. And so in order to have a more objective criteria, we are proposing a new term, residential in character, but we do have some objective standards that need to be met in order to be considered residential in character. So first of all, within our agricultural, ag-residential, and RD1 through RD10 zones, the property must be developed with a primary dwelling unit. In addition, the use cannot have traffic generation that exceeds what is typical in a residential neighborhood. And to get the 10 to 16 trips, we looked at the Institute of Transportation Engineers' Trip Generation Manual, and for single-family residential uses, that was the range that they typically provided as being typical. The other criteria has to do with scale and intensity, and so we want to ensure that these facilities are in scale with their surrounding neighborhood. So if you have a neighborhood that's all predominantly single-story, small-scale homes, a five or 10,000-square-foot, two- or three-story dwelling would not be in tune with that surrounding neighborhood. It would also probably require more than five vehicles and, or, I'm sorry, five parking spaces. And the reason we have the five parking space threshold is that when you have a need for more than five uncovered parking spaces, our zoning code currently requires parking lot standards, so parking lot lighting, landscaping. And so once you start developing a site with parking lots, it's really no longer a residential type of use, it's really more of a commercial or institutional type use. And so we're really hoping that this will help different, help staff and the public understand the difference between a residential care home and something that's more in tune of a congregate care facility or a convalescent hospital or something more intensive. And those more intensive uses where they're permitted typically require a use permit. Um, let's see. All right, so getting to scattered shelters. So the county has a very successful scattered shelter program that assists our unhoused population in obtaining permanent housing. And currently, there is not a use classification within our zoning code that adequately captures this scattered shelter program. For the last few years, we've kind of been slipping them under our residential care home section because until the recent changes in transitional and supportive housing came along, we currently list transitional housing as a type of residential care home. However, in working with Department of Homeless Services and Housing, DHSH staff, we found that the scattered shelter program is very unique and doesn't really meet the definition of transitional housing. One of the key aspects is that a lot of times, these folks are only in these, these dwellings for a short period of time, maybe a couple weeks or a couple months, and to be transitional housing, there has to be a minimum stay of at least six months. They also are considered clients versus residents, so they don't have tenancy rights, they're not allowed to have vehicles. And so there's some unique aspects to the program that we felt deserved their own use classification. And so in working with the DHSH staff, we created this table of where these uses are allowed as well as the definition. I do need to point out that we talked with the Planning Commission and even in the staff report about the ability to have 10 or more and the ability to utilize a triplex or small apartment complex, and we forgot to list that in the use table. So as part of this update process, that would be an administrative change that we would be correcting in the table, is that in our RD15 through RD40, that if less than 10 would be permitted and over 10 would be a minor use permit.
Hang on, Wendy. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. So I just heard you say, correct me if I'm wrong, that the clients are not permitted to have vehicles?
Correct. And Emily Halcon is here today, and she can provide information on some of the specific operational...
My question has to do with, under, on the slide, under Use Standards says parking requirement, one space per three clients. So is that really a ratio that's intended to be based on the landlord or, or program staff?
It's for, it's to ensure program staff. So they do have folks that come to check in on these, they have caseworkers, and so it's to ensure that as people are coming and going, and we already have a requirement that single-family homes have two parking spaces, so it's usually not in...
So why not have the use standard be based on program staff instead of clients? I mean, it doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense.
Um, yeah.
Because, you see my point?
I do. I think it could work both ways. So if you had a dwelling with six clients, there would be two parking spaces to ensure that there would at least be, if there were different caseworkers or different folks coming to the facility to assist those clients, there's parking available for them. On the larger homes, it would require three parking spaces. We could flip it on the number of...
Well, unless, unless there's some distinction here that, that is important, I would make the suggestion that it be based on the occupancy or the presence of program staff, not clients. Otherwise, it's a bit confusing. Unless someone over to my right wants to chime in here.
Good morning, Emily Halcon, Director of Department of Homeless Services and Housing. While it is not typical that clients of the scattered site shelter have vehicles, it has happened from time to time, and we have accommodated them within the parking allowances. Wendy is correct, is that most of the parking is used for staff. In the contract that we have with our operator, we require them to support with transportation, so bus passes, Uber, et cetera, so that a vehicle is not required. But I do want to clarify that vehicles are not writ large, just not allowed in the program. We've had exceptions where people are working or they have childcare needs or something, but we are always cognizant of the parking impacts to the neighborhood. And I, I should note that we, we don't get complaints about this, and we, we work really hard with CityNet to make sure that, for example, if there's two clients with vehicles, we put them in two different homes so that we're not over-parking the neighborhood.
And that's, I appreciate the clarification. I guess it, it bears mentioning that perhaps not to confuse supervisors or the public, don't, you know, please don't tell us that they're not allowed if they're, you're making exceptions.
Thank you.
That's something different, so, thank you.
And my apologies, I wasn't aware that exceptions were allowed.
Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate that clarification, and I had another one, just kind of getting back to this, 10 or fewer, 10 or more. Could it be construed then, given the one space per three clients, under that five parking space magic number where it's considered a more commercial operation and not a residential, no longer residential in nature, that, that, within those permitted zones... no longer residential in nature, that within those permitted zones, that's a maximum, or even in the minor-use permit zones, it's a maximum of 15 clients?
So that is for uncovered parking spaces in most cases. I know not every home has a garage, but most have at least a single car or two-car garage, so that would count as towards their parking space requirement. So it would be once they had five uncovered parking spaces. Chances are, at that point, they're also needing a minor use permit, which would go through the process, and we'd be able to condition it. But yes, we would be concerned if they start to have a need for that many parking spaces uncovered.
So I'm gonna have to step out for a minute, so just in case this conversation moves on without me. I kind of want to express my concerns here, which is, and I think you've touched on them in the last slide, and that is, there's a slippery slope between residential in nature and more of a commercial-aimed facility. And whereas we've really, you know, zeroed in on boarding houses as a commercial operation, the truth is, a lot of these transitional houses, scattered-site shelters, certainly the detox facilities, et cetera, are for-profit in nature. It's some company that is managing each of these units, and they're plopping them down into different neighborhoods. And so I just want to make sure that we are fully vetting and anticipating the loopholes that we're creating, and if so, if covered parking is one of those loopholes, then now I'm gonna build a lean-to onto the side, or I'm gonna go get one of those pole barn-style carport shelters, or, you know, I just want to, because I've run into this in the past with that six-bed or fewer that was mandated by state law, that they were dropping some pretty sensitive uses into traditional neighborhoods, and it just creates a situation where there's a lot of upheaval and outcry, and we're not able to do anything about it. And so I would hate to be sort of broadening the tent under which that can happen, where we're unintentionally creating a situation, and particularly in District 5 and other districts, where we're talking more rural in nature, where the land is cheaper, that, you know, the uses are more spread out, so there's fewer eyes on things, and it just creates an opportunity for something that we didn't necessarily contemplate, that now becomes a larger issue.
That actually makes sense. And so we did talk a little bit about whether or not they have to be in a fully enclosed, attached or detached garage. We often have folks that use carports. I believe if the board has concerns about the use of carports, we could tighten that up.
My concern isn't so much the built environment, as it is the intent of what we're doing here, and what we're required to do, and how it may be, you know, misinterpreted or even subverted by somebody who's, who can, you know, find the loopholes and can weasel into a situation that's creating a greater impact than we anticipated. Fair enough. Thank you. And by the way, weasel is not a legal term.
All right. So at the Planning Commission, they also had a lot of questions about scattered shelter. One of the things they discussed was whether or not a minor use permit was the appropriate level of entitlement for over 10, and whether it should be elevated to a higher level. We discussed the fact that the majority of these are under county control through various mechanisms, and likely would be exempt from the use permit requirements regardless of what level we place it at, and that for the few that may operate outside of the county's program, under the minor use permit, there's still neighborhood notification and ability to condition those projects and make sure, to address some of the concerns that the neighbors may have, such as Supervisor Hume raised. And so after that discussion, the commission was comfortable with keeping it at the minor use permit level. They again also asked per to explore spacing and concentration allowances, somewhat similar to the previous discussion in reviewing HCD guidance and conversations with our county council. We are not recommending any concentration or spacing requirements, especially for the ones that are 10 or fewer with the use permit. We kind of have a little bit more discretion to look at, you know, are there other facilities, you know, right next to each other, and would that cause an issue? And a little bit of that is based on the fact that these are still considered a type of emergency shelter. It's one of the county's alternatives to your more traditional, large, emergency shelter types of programs scattered throughout the community, so they're not as impactful to the neighborhood. And even on the large-scale emergency shelters, the state really cautions against having spacing and over-concentration requirements, and at most, on those large facilities, the maximum spacing requirement is still only 300 square feet, so just, you know, a couple residential lots. So we are already to the last section that the, yeah, we are, that the zoning code update addresses, and that is farmworker housing. And when the county was getting our most recent housing element certified, HCD requested that we consider, they did not mandate, it was just that we consider allowing farmworker housing in more zone districts than just our agricultural zones, so our agricultural residential, for example, and also allowing farmworker homes greater than 1,200 square feet in size. And so staff presented this information to the CPACs, the Agriculture Advisory Committee, or AAC, as well as the Planning Commission. And the CPAC's major concern that we heard through most of the CPAC meetings was conversion or use of these farmworker homes for folks other than farmworkers. So initially coming in, saying that they were building farmworker housing, and then just renting them out to the general public, or using it as a mechanism to further subdivide property down the line and what have you. They also didn't really feel that expanding into the ag-res zones was appropriate, as most of our agricultural residential zones are not used for commercial farming, there are a few, but the majority of our AR zones are rural residential estates and maybe some hobby farming. And then lastly, they also didn't see a need to allow for homes greater than 1,200 square feet. By state law, we would have to allow up to 16 farmworker dwelling units on a site, and so they were really concerned with a bunch of large dwellings on the property. The meeting with the AAC also didn't result in their feeling a need to really expand where we allow for farmworker housing at this time. In order to address concerns that we did receive, staff reviewed best practices and zoning codes from surrounding counties in Northern California, and based on their best practices, the following types of amendments are proposed. They primarily relate to requiring a deed restriction, so that the owners and future owners are on notice that this housing is reserved just for farmworker housing and can't be converted to other uses without approval from the county, as well as establishing some development standards, which we currently don't have for farmworker housing, such as setbacks, ensuring that these dwellings are, you know, adequately set back from property lines, or from livestock, having some requirements that they provide some parking, as well as restrictions on detached accessory types of structures. And then some provisions for short-term seasonal farmworker housing, which primarily occurs in recreational vehicles, ensuring that they get clearances from EMD and building for health and safety purposes.
Pause for a moment. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So when it comes to farmworker housing, what consideration, if any, did we attempt to present to CPACs, or the Planning Commission, or even just amongst staff, in terms of recognizing the fact that farmworkers make a fairly modest living? And so their need for affordable housing is almost inherent. So what can you tell me about some of that consideration as it relates to expanding the ability for farmworker housing to be legally, technically applicable to garden apartments, or even apartment living, or multifamily living that is at some distance from agricultural lands where they work? Because to me, that's the most important, most relevant aspect of what we're trying to match up here, is affordability with the fact that that particular, you know, type of labor does not come with fairly significant salaries.
So right now, state law only addresses detached, single-family dwellings and barrack-type housing, or dormitory-type housing, and they don't address multifamily. What the county and what other jurisdictions I've worked in primarily do for the apartment complexes is we just treat them like any other multifamily. We don't treat them differently because they're farmworkers. So if, depending on the number of units being proposed, if they're more than three, it would be multifamily. They could be in any of the zones that allow for multifamily, under the same provisions that either market rate or affordable housing projects would go in.
So again, remind me how, too, the concern, I guess, that you said was expressed, I forget if it was CPAC or Commission. What part of this program will attempt, you know, at least annually, to make sure that barrack or detached farmworker housing is in fact being designated as such, and not being co-opted by other types of occupants?
So we're, our proposal is to now require a deed restriction, so it's recorded against the property. We do have some properties primarily in the Delta area where farmworker housing decades ago has been converted over just to rental property. So this would, and when you talk to these folks, when they bought the property, they're like, oh, we didn't know that it couldn't be used for just rental. So the deed restriction would hopefully put folks on notice that there's this cloud on the deed. In addition, farmworker housing does require permits and inspections from Environmental Management Department, and if over five dwelling units on a property, it also requires some oversight from the state. And so we haven't really received very many new requests for farmworker housing. When we've done our housing element updates and annual reports, as well as working on this code update and conversations with our Agricultural Commission office and the AAC, our particular area doesn't have quite the number of, like, seasonal migrant farmworkers that maybe some other areas do. We tend to have folks that live here year-round, and maybe part of the year they're doing farmwork, part of the year they're doing other sort of work, and so they're not, there's not as much of a need as what we were being told for onsite farmworker housing than for the type of housing that you referenced, Supervisor Serna, which is like apartments close to other, you know, transportations, jobs, and services, and stuff like that. So more of our multifamily. Increasing our multifamily would assist with the concerns you mentioned.
So we do have, I appreciate the response, so we do have a pretty clear idea on those numbers, in terms of the fact that we might be very different than, say, San Joaquin, or Fresno, or in terms of migrant farmworkers versus kind of county resident farmworkers?
I don't have number stats, I'm sure we would get those. When I was on the long-range team and working with the Agricultural Commissioner's Office on our annual report, they provided this information to us in more of a general summary without stats behind it, that there's just, hasn't been a lot of demand for new housing.
So anecdotal, it sounds like.
I'm sorry?
So anecdotal information.
Anecdotal information, correct.
Okay. I mean, I don't know whether that's, it's the case or not. I mean, anecdotally, I can tell you that when I, you know, travel occasionally down through the depths of District 5 on the Delta, and you got pear farms, you have row crop farming, you have a pretty wide assortment of, especially wine grapes, which is a very farmworker labor-intensive crop to manage. I don't know whether those are farmworkers that are moving up and down the Central Valley, or they farmworkers that are, you know, make their living rotating, doing planting, harvesting, and crop maintenance just within the county. I think we ought to probably get a better understanding of what the nature is of Sacramento County's farmworker population before we start making too much policy around anecdotal information or assumptions. And I'm not sure how best to acquire that information. You might want to consider, you know, talking to the United Farmworkers, they might be able to help. Which, by the way, they, just a side note, they have their own foundation that is in the business of building farmworker housing. So they may be very well-equipped to help answer some of these questions.
We can also do a report back to the board from EMD, because they, as I did mention, EMD does have to permit and inspect, and we could get an idea from them on how many properties or units they currently are regulating.
And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, HCD, at least once upon a time, and I think it's been refunded a few times, did have some specific funding sources for farmworker housing.
They did have a grant program.
It was in my late father's name, that's why I know it.
Yeah. They did have a grant program. I am not a, I know when I worked in another jurisdiction, we had received a grant, and then the funding went away, and I don't know if they've ever...
I know it was refunded at least one cycle, so...
Reestablished, but it's, yeah, it's a very small pot of money when they do have it. And then they also have permitting requirements for over five.
Yeah. Thank you.
Go ahead, continue.
I'm sorry, no more questions?
No.
All right. So then, let's see, I went through the operational requirements. And so on February 5th, we held a meeting with the Planning Commission, and I've mentioned throughout my presentation some of the concerns and comments they had. In the end, they unanimously recommended that the Board of Supervisors determine that the previous environmental document is adequate, and to approve the ordinance amending Chapters 3 and 7 of the Sacramento County zoning code. And if you have any further questions, I'll do my best to answer them, and as I previously mentioned, Emily is here if you have specific questions on scattered shelter program.
Supervisor Desmond.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Wendy. And I was waiting, waiting till the end, because I have some questions, I think, that relate to several different provisions of this staff item. But thank you for your work. I mean, I, you know, I just, from a higher level, I think to myself, I don't always appreciate the state stepping in and imposing things on local governments, especially when it comes to land use, but a lot of these provisions I actually agree with in terms of the group supportive housing and transitional housing. So my first, I guess my first question, so you mentioned RHIP. Will, are all these uses already subject to RHIP?
Yes and no. So we're trying to find out if the scattered shelters are subject to it. In most cases, anytime a property owner wants to rent out their home, they are supposed to register with RHIP.
Whether they're nonprofit or for-profit, correct?
Correct. And so our care homes are registered with them, boarding houses, and even folks that are just renting their home, you know, to an individual family are supposed to be registered, apartment complexes, et cetera. The reason we are not entirely sure, we do have some messages into staff from RHIP, and I don't think we've heard back from them yet, but we know that our units that are under the Housing Choice voucher program don't require RHIP because they're already under separate inspection. And so we're trying to find out if these scattered shelter units would fall under that same category, since it's under county oversight and has some more restrictive probably provisions than regular rental units do. But that being said, if you're just renting out your home, and you're not living there, so like roommates, like if I decided I needed to have a roommate, I wouldn't have to register because I'm living there. But if I wanted to just rent out my home completely to another family and move elsewhere, I would need to register that unit. Folks doing residential care homes need to register, and folks doing boarding houses need to register. Supportive housing, I doubt would. I'd have to find out, it might depend on how they're being operated.
Okay. And I, yeah, I'd appreciate that, and maybe a follow-up on that, because... one of my concerns is just, you know, my perspective, we have a lot of, I'm not as concerned about the locations or facilities that are either operated by the county or with a provider that's under direct contract through the county. Because I know there are ways we can, I keep looking at Siobhan, sorry, there are ways we can hold them accountable if issues occur. My bigger concern is, I think maybe Supervisor Hume alluded to it, is sometimes we do get private operators that come into these communities, and we don't even know they're showing up. And we don't have, you know, we don't, we have much less control over them. Now, if they're part of the RHIP, that certainly helps. But in terms of, you know, I'm looking at the residential and character definition that you had back on Slide Number 10. And, you know, what if, what if they exceed those things? What if they're not complying with that? What's our, what recourse do we have to address it?
So the same recourse we have right now for any zoning violation, we receive a complaint typically through 311 or one of your offices, and we have it filed through Code Enforcement to establish a code complaint number. They do some investigation. If they're able to determine a violation, they'll send the person a citation. If they're not able to, sometimes they'll do a courtesy letter, like, you know, we've been notified, da-da-da-da, make sure, you know, this is how you're, you're operating. So if they're not in compliance, they go through the Code Enforcement process, which as we know, sometimes can be very successful and other times can be a bit challenging. And folks can get fined if they're not in compliance. In this case, if they were exceeding those characteristics, then we would put them in a different use classification. And depending on what they were doing, you know, we would determine, are you a congregate care facility? Are you a rehabilitation facility or convalescent hospital? And is that use allowed in that zone district? And what type of entitlement would be required? So in some cases, it could be, you need to get a use permit.
Okay. No, actually, I appreciate that. Part of my question was rhetorical to have you, well, but to have you, you know, state, I think, for the, for the public record what the recourse is. But that's interesting. I hadn't thought about that. Maybe there's, there's a way we could go back and revisit. As part of resolving it, are you required to get some other kind of licensure, right, you know, through the county? So, okay, I appreciate that. Because right now, in District Three, you know, kind of what we experience is, we have a few homes in residential areas that are serving, you know, older foster youth. We have some private scattered site shelters that are being operated completely independent and exclusive of the county. We have privately-run sober living centers, some of which are several, several homes, like six to eight homes, all right in a row in one neighborhood that have, you know, kind of taken over one whole street. And these things, they have an impact in these residential communities. I mean, we all know that. And my concern isn't so much about, you know, limiting, we do, obviously, we need more of these kinds of things. But I don't want to create a climate where we don't know where they're going, and we don't have as much control over them if things go wrong, which is kind of, you know, kind of why I asked you that question. So I, another, my, so my next question is about the spacing issue that came up from the Planning Commission. Maybe this is for County Council, because, you know, and this, in terms of the scattered site proposal of this, of this zoning change, you know, is, can we not impose a spacing limitation on where these scattered site shelters can be? Or can you comment on that?
Sure. So you can, but you shouldn't. And the reason is because typically scattered shelters are occupied by protected classes of people. And so we have to be very careful that we are not discriminating against people in terms of housing. That's one of the larger issues. We also have pro-housing designation. And so we don't want to do anything that's going to conflict with our obligation to affirmatively further housing for all individuals, especially these sensitive populations. When you look at the HCD guidance and even some of the case law, great caution has to be exercised in imposing any requirement on this population that you would not impose on any other population.
Okay. Thank you, June. I appreciate that. Now, we also, though, I mean, adding this scattered site definition with up to 10 people and allowing it by right is also something we're not being required to do by the legislation either. Isn't that correct?
Correct.
That's above and beyond?
Right.
The legislation. So, and, so let me follow up on that, and I appreciate the legal advice. Now, again, going back to kind of some of my experiences, my concern and seeing some of these other things is that you'll end up in some environmental justice community where someone can acquire several homes right next to each other on a street, and all of a sudden, you have, you know, 50, 60-person homeless shelter all right next to each other. You know, that's my concern, and I don't think that's a hypothetical, that's really, you know, kind of pie in the sky thinking. So that's a concern. But I suppose, and just kind of thinking this through, and I looked at Siobhan, say we don't impose any kind of spacing requirement in the code, certainly if the, if the, most likely it would be a scattered site shelter or provider that's looking for public money, we can certainly impose those limitations, right?
Absolutely. And I think Emily's come to the board to talk about our good neighbor policies and those types of things that we put into our contracts. So ensuring that we're controlling for that through contract would be how we would handle it.
Okay. So, and that would be okay, June, I'm imagining. I, okay. And I appreciate you letting me just kind of, you know, stream of consciousness up here, because I know a lot of constituents that I represent are concerned about some of these things when we make these kinds of changes. In terms of the, so in terms of the scattered sites, Siobhan, how many, how many do we have in the county? How many scattered site shelter homes do we have?
We currently have 145 beds, which represent about 29 homes. There's no more than, no more than six people per home.
Okay. So then, that leads to my next question. Why the need to bump this up to 10? What was the, your thinking behind that?
Great. I'm going to let Emily talk about that.
Thank you. Yeah. So the rationale to allow us a little bit larger is that as, you know, real estate changes, we've had some options for things like triplexes and fourplexes, and we don't want to limit that it has to only be a single-family home with three or four bedrooms. We're in a tight rental market. So there have been a couple of instances where the provider has suggested something like a three or a fourplex, which would allow more than five or six people. And so that was sort of the rationale. We would never go more than 10. And I don't believe right now that we have any that are that large, but allowing us that flexibility allows us to diversify some of the properties that we might consider.
Okay. I appreciate that. And you know, Emily, we've had this, I'm a big fan of the scattered site model, I think, as it fits into our larger approach to homelessness and housing and shelter. I mean, I think it, it works really well from a number of different perspectives, one of which is, you know, get someone off the street and into an environment where they're probably more likely to succeed, right? They're in a residential community and maybe not subject to some of the negative influences that we see in other locations. So I'm a big fan of it. So I don't want you to take this as me, you know, criticizing that model, because it's certainly not what it's intended to do. Okay. So, and let me ask this. So in terms of the, and maybe this is also for council, something I've thought about before but never asked it, asked it here, but if we start seeing a lot more maybe scattered site shelters, is our ordinance that we passed a couple of years ago that gives us the opportunity to restrict camping within a certain distance of a shelter, does that apply also to the scattered site shelters?
I'm not sure. Are you, you're referring to the critical?
It was a critical infrastructure ordinance, and we had a provision in there that says we could restrict camping up to, I believe it was 1,000 feet-
Up to 1,000.
-of a shelter facility.
It likely would.
Okay. In case we needed to use it. And that, again, that's my, getting back to kind of, if problems come up, how can we, do we have the right tools to be able to address them? And that's not, that's not NIMBY thinking. That's, I think, being responsible and making sure we can address some of these concerns if they come up. So I'd like to get clarification on that.
If I could jump in, I know Supervisor Hume's on the Q2, but following up on that, have we formalized the critical infrastructure? Because I know that there was a resolution that was going to come forward that gave it more specificity as far as the definition. Have we, are we there yet?
No.
No, I don't believe we have. We have not brought that forward.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I should note on the scattered site shelter, just for clarification, we'll work with County Council on that question. Not all of the units are within the unincorporated county. There are some within our cities, and so different provisions may apply depending on the city. And then within our service contract, we do have provisions that require dispersment, and they do require good neighbor policies, and they require my staff to be immediately notified of any issue with compliance behaviors, but also physical issues with the properties. And my staff, while we're not code inspectors, we are on-site pretty regularly to try to make sure that there's no issues on-site.
Okay. But of course, that, you know, the problem is some of these privately-run ones, right, Emily? And I, and I think a few in Carmichael, as a matter of fact, and they're wonderful. They do, I think, a great job. I know we'd like to get them to come into the larger, you know, system for more coordinated access, but that's a different discussion. I do think on the critical infrastructure, I know there was, on that ordinance, there was follow-up on specific locations, but it was my understanding that at least the provisions relating to the distance from a shelter, that was operational as soon as that passed. Correct, Siobhan?
That is correct.
If we wanted to use it, if we needed to use it.
That is operational, and then some additional structures is what we would need to bring back to the board.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have.
Supervisor Hume. Thank you, Chair. I guess I don't have any questions at this point, other than the fact that I do see in this, a lot of the comments that Supervisor Desmond just made and the questions that he asked are in line with where I'm coming at on this issue. And just, to me, again, this is the state usurping local control. And it can be argued, it's politically expedient for those of us on the dais in that we can kind of say, well, look, we have no control over this. But that's no less impactful to the neighborhoods and to the people who have invested in their neighborhoods and who, you know, anticipate. And that's why, in some cases, the state is doing this, is to remove that NIMBY factor, as was mentioned. But I think the way that staff has really come at this and the questions that the Planning Commission has raised and some of the issues raised from this dais speak to the fact that this is treading a fine line of completely changing the nature of a neighborhood into more intensive commercial, you know, urbanized quote-unquote uses. And to the point about the spacing, you could potentially have a scattered site shelter, a transitional house, detox facility, and all of these on the same block, potentially run by the same company, granted permission from on high to be there, and yet the neighborhood would come and we have no recourse. And so I think having some sort of mechanism in place wherein we can revoke the permits, wherein we can set forth standards when complaints are received, those types of things, is the flipside of this, where we at least are still responsive to those folks who feel like they've had, you know, untenable situations arise from these uses. So, you know, and I speak a lot of this from experience within the, you know, more rural, agri-ral section of the unincorporated county, wherein, you know, it just becomes this sort of amoeba that continues to grow once it, once it gets in there, and it completely changes, not just from the clients, but also from people interfacing with the clients. You can continue. That was a question.
Oh.
Any other questions? Not seeing any other questions from the board. Are you, are you through with your presentation?
I am through with my presentation.
Okay. Is there any member of the public that has to, would like to address the board on this item? All right, seeing none, thank you very much. It was a very, very thorough presentation. Appreciate it. Is there a recommendation from the board?
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'll move the item. I'm going to just make a comment. I just, when it comes to the scattered site shelters, I just want to make sure we're very intentional about policies and mindful of the kind of dynamic that Supervisor Hume just outlined. Because, I mean, the reality is, if those kinds of things develop, what we're going to see is these getting kind of put in neighborhoods that have already been under resourced, that are, that are sometimes already, have an over-concentration of some of these issues. So I think we need to be really cognizant of that. So with that, I'll move approval. And thank you, you know, staff for your work and Wendy for your very thorough presentation.
Okay, we have motion. Chair will second. Please vote.
And the motion passes by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item 51, please.
Item 51 is introduction of the Emergency Medical Services Triage to Alternate Destinations Program. Authority to establish a triage to alternate destination program in the Sacramento County Emergency Medical Services Agency. Establish and appoint initial members to a Sacramento County Emergency Medical Care Committee, and authorize a Sacramento County Emergency Medical Care Committee to create and adopt bylaws. Amend the Sacramento County Board's Committees, Commissions and Councils Conflict of Interest Code, and continuous authority to execute five-year, zero-dollar agreements with alternate destination facilities.
Thank you.
All right. Good morning.
You're much taller than you are on Zoom, by the way.
Well, good morning, Chairman Kennedy and the rest of the members of the board. So as most of you know, my name's Greg Cannon. I'm the EMS Medical Director for Sacramento County. I thank you for the opportunity to come before you today, to have a chance to talk about our Triage to Alternate Destination Program that we are looking to implement within the county, and ultimately to ask for your support for that implementation. So just to give a little bit of a, of a, an idea about how we're going to progress today, I've got a short presentation that gives a little bit of an introduction as far as why this program is important, gives some information on the history of triage to alternate destination across the state. And then, once I'm done with that presentation, I'll have some further comments with regard to the EMCC Committee that we are going to be speaking about, have some further comments about the next steps with implementation. And then I've also, just even just coming over here today, I was thinking about kind of some of the future implications on what this program would mean for Sacramento County, and it can, how it can really kind of set us up for some success into the future. But before I start with the presentation, I'd like to actually just turn around to the folks in the room here. As the morning was going on, we had a bunch of folks trickling in here, and I always want to just thank everybody that comes and stands behind me and gives me their support for the programs that we put in place. So we have membership here from all of our county public fire EMS agencies. We've got representation from our private EMS providers. We've got medical directors from many of those agencies. We've got hospital representation, and we've got folks from our Sac County EMS agency. So I think, I think this, just the simple fact that we have that many people in the room, I think, highlights the importance of these programs and highlights the fact that we need to be innovative and that we need to be moving forward with things that are going to elevate our EMS system. So with that, I'm going to carry on here. So first off, just a little bit of history with regard to triage to alternate destination. So this, this type of a program is not new in the state of California. For the past number of years, there have been pilot programs that have been sprinkled across the state. Coming to mind are, in particular, San Francisco, down in Stanislaus County, Modesto, and a number of others, which essentially looked at, how can we take certain patient populations and move them out of the lane going to an emergency department and into another area where they can be given care? Those pilot programs were wildly successful. I point later in the, in the presentation to, down in Fresno County with their behavioral health programs, San Francisco with their ability to move patients to sobering centers, and down in Modesto, Stanislaus County with another triage to alternate destination program for psychiatric patients. So back, just a couple of years ago, AB 1544 came out, which, which gave statutory approval for the continuance of these programs, but it had a very short sunset. So actually, the, just on the 1st of January 2024, that, that legislation sunsetted the ability of our traditional alternate destination programs to continue. So a lot of the counties and EMS agencies like Sacramento decided that they wouldn't move ahead because just the short window, just the- move ahead because just the short window, just that it wasn't worth it. It wasn't worth putting in a program that was going to work for eight to 10 months and then have to shut down because it was outside of the statutory window. But that was fixed with the passage of AB 767, which gave a furtherance of triage to alternate destination programs with a sunset that's now been set out of January 1st, 2031. So that kind of was the statutory impetus for us to move ahead with our program. So our program looks at specifically the triage to alternate destination for patients who are in mental health crisis or are in need of sobering services within the county. So fairly narrow lane. We have lessons learned from the pilot programs that have been started throughout the county. I highlight the lessons from the Central California EMS agency, which represents Fresno, Madera, Kings, and Tulare County. In 2022, their triage to alternate destination program for mental health was able to off-ramp over 2,000 behavioral health patients into crisis stabilization that was not in an emergency department, and they reported zero adverse events. So no incidents where there was a, any kind of an adverse event from that EMS transport. San Francisco County, who I mentioned in the introduction, in, through their five-year sobering center program, saw over 3,800 patients, and they only saw 64 of those patients, which is less than 2% requiring a further transport to an emergency department. So these two examples highlight the fact that if this is done safe, if this is done appropriately with policies that are put in place and training that is appropriate for our providers, these programs can be administered and done in a safe fashion.
Doctor, hold for a minute. Yes.
Question about that. Just so I have a clear understanding about the distinction between certain response scenarios. So if someone is suspected of being in the throes of opioid overdose and appropriate response is made by EMTs to administer Narcan, or let's say, a police officer, sheriff deputy is first on scene, they administer Narcan, is that going to be a scenario where it's mandatory that they have to go to an ER? Or is the onsite, infield administration of Narcan enough to get them stabilized to the point where maybe they just go to a sobering center?
So the policies that are being written today would have that patient going to an emergency department. If they've been reversed with naloxone from an opioid overdose situation, that person could slip back into respiratory depression and other things which could be dangerous, which would preclude them from going to a sobering center. Now, we do have other policies which we stood up in the county, such as our ability to provide medically assisted therapy on the spot. Our paramedics are providing buprenorphine. That policy went live on May 1st. So it gives our pre-hospital personnel an opportunity to intervene on that patient population, but they would still be required to go to an emergency department.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right. So obviously, triage to alternate destination and these types of programs are brought forward in an attempt to address our ambulance patient offload time problem, which exists not only in Sacramento but across the state. I have here our rolling 12-month year of our APOT data. When I put this presentation together, we were only finishing up February, but you can see that we started off back in March of 2023 at 78 minutes, highlighted, or went up to as high as 80 minutes last summer. And we've seen a pretty, a slow downward trend in our APOT numbers. I can say that our March 24th number was 56 minutes, and just this morning, I had an opportunity to speak with staff in-house, and we found that our APOT number went to 55. So 56 to 55. So we are seeing a continuous downward trend, which is good. We have implemented a number of other programs and policies throughout the county, which I think are making an effect. But I see triage to alternate destination as another stepping stone in the road to try to get us to our AB 40 compliance, which is ultimately 30 minutes. So I put this slide up here just simply to highlight the fact that our mental health, our mental health disorder patient population and our patient population that have substance use disorders play a very large role in our emergency department patient population and the utilization of those beds within that department or those departments. So I put this next slide up here, and this is, two of our hospitals came forward with kind of de-identified data on their psychiatric patient populations. So this is data from 2023. So we have one of our hospitals, which reported that their psychiatric patient populations that were discharged to inpatient care. So these are patients that were brought to the emergency department in crisis, were placed on a hold, were medically cleared, and then at some point in their stay were moved off to one of our local area inpatient psychiatric care facilities. There was, that hospital A had over 1,200 patients that met that definition, and their average ED length of stay was 31 hours. So a day and a half spent in one of our treatment beds in our local emergency department. The flip side to that coin is psychiatry, patients that arrived in behavioral health crisis that were placed on a hold, seen, evaluated, and eventually the holds were lifted and they were sent home, so they didn't go to inpatient psychiatric care. There was over 1,800 of those patients. Their average length of stay was 27 hours.
May I interrupt?
Yeah.
So when you say in that instance, that weren't placed on a hold, but they were supervised for some period of time, right?
So the majority of these people would have been placed on a hold. So for example, if they were placed on hold by local law enforcement, brought into the emergency department, had a medical clearance that was needed to be done, but then had to have that hold either continued or to be removed by one of our medical social workers at one of our facilities.
So are we talking about like a pre-5150 hold, for lack of a better phrase, I guess?
So these people would have been on a 5150.
Okay.
So placed, oftentimes placed by law enforcement, patient then comes to us in the emergency department. We make sure that there's no medical need, and then those patients are evaluated by our in-house medical social workers to determine, do they need to continue to be on a hold? Or has their psychiatric disturbance, for lack of a better term, kind of cleared? Are they no longer suicidal, or are they no longer a danger to themselves or others?
So they present as a potential 72-hour hold, and then it's made, the determination is made that, no, it doesn't need to be full three-day, it could be something far less?
Or that they could go home.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So in that patient population, the average length of stay at this hospital was 27 hours.
And I assume that there's, you know, unfortunately, all kinds of flavors of 5150 scenarios. I mean, there's those that present with, you know, physical injury to themselves, and so those, I would assume, are very distinctly different than, you know, something that doesn't include obvious physical harm to oneself or others.
Well, certainly, those factors would play into the overall evaluation of that patient, whether or not they can contract for their own safety. Are they, is this somebody that our psychiatric staff at our hospitals can, in good faith, believe that they're going to go home and they're not going to continue to be a danger to themselves or others?
And God forbid, if the determination is made that this patient is not a candidate for a full 72-hour hold, they're free to go home, and then something shortly thereafter happens that thrusts them back into emotional or psychotic distress, and someone is injured, including themselves, who's liable?
I think that's a bigger discussion. I think that oftentimes will fall to the emergency departments and who's doing the work to clear those patients. Yeah. So to continue on the vein of just the understanding about how long our psychiatric patient population stays in the emergency departments, Hospital B, another hospital from, within Sacramento County, had a similar story. So patients who were discharged to inpatient care, almost 1,500 patients with an average length of stay even longer, 39 hours. And then psychiatric patients which were discharged home from that facility, there was over 2,000 of them with an average length of stay of 28 hours. So you can actually calculate these bed length stays in years. So in one year, one hospital had over 10 years' worth of bedtime taken up by this patient population. The second hospital had over, almost 13 years' worth of bedtime taken up by this patient population in the emergency department. And I'll highlight, I'm an emergency department physician myself, and the idea of the right treatment at the right time for the right patient does not apply here, because we have folks that come in who are in clear psychiatric crisis. We are able to give them the medicines they need to initially stabilize that person and make sure that there's no medical need, there's nothing that's dangerous for them. But then oftentimes, these people will sit, as the slide highlights, for a day, where it's just trying to figure out where they can go next, where if we have triage to alternate destination, these patients can be brought, the right patient can be brought directly to the inpatient psychiatric facility, where they can get the care that they need immediately and on an ongoing basis and not wasting the excessive length of time in our emergency department. And then the backend to this, obviously, is that that frees up bed space for ambulance patient offload and for our ambulance crews to return back to the 911 system. So this gives a kind of a graphical depiction of the issue.
Doctor, I'm sorry. Supervisor Frost.
Hi, doctor. I just was wondering, are you stating that there are adequate mental health beds and services where they could be redirected to?
So there are facilities in the county that have stood forward to do that, yes. And our triage to alternate destination program has identified one such facility, which would allow us to do that work, yes.
So it's a matter of, they have to vet, they kind of have to, they can't just send them, they have, once they come in the door, they have to triage them and actually treat them before they can send them forward versus if they went directly to the mental health care facility?
So are you referring to the emergency department?
Yes.
Yes. So when a patient in psychiatric crisis comes to us in the ED, we have a responsibility to do a medical screening exam to make sure that there's no, there's no underlying medical problem.
Or drugs or whatever.
Whatever the case might be. We have a duty to stabilize that patient and to make sure that they are medically cleared or safe, that they could then move on to the next facility. So, you know, we, with the experience from other counties, the Fresno example, the example from Stanislaus County and Modesto, it has been shown that in a certain population of these folks, this, that medical clearance step can be done safely in the field, and you can bypass the emergency department. You can bring those people straight to the psychiatric urgent care, where they can be evaluated, and then sometimes those people can be, okay, your crisis has ended, there's no longer a need for a further hospitalization, they can be discharged from there. Or if there's a need for them to be admitted into the inpatient side of the mental health institution, then they can do that.
So there's not a way to redirect them before they're offloaded or before they walk in the door?
Currently in Sacramento County, no. No. And that's what this program will do for us.
Thank you. Well, I'm sorry, but what you're saying, but this program does require the expertise in the field to do the evaluation. It's not like they can just come to the emergency room and you can say, this looks, you can redirect it.
Absolutely. And that's something I'll get to, kind of, at the tail end of the presentation. We'll have a conversation about that.
Thank you.
Okay. So the next slide here just gives a kind of an appreciation as far as the numbers when it comes to behavioral health or behavioral or psychiatric crisis and alcohol intoxication. So back looking from 2019 through last year, 2013, you can see a steady increase in the number of patients presenting to our local emergency departments in either behavioral or psychiatric crisis. You can see that the same holds true for alcohol intoxication events. So I put this slide up here to highlight that this is an ever-expanding issue, and it's putting further pressure on our already fragile emergency care system in the county, which highlights the need for innovative solutions that can try to off-ramp some of this volume that's going to our emergency departments.
Before you leave this slide, doctor, because you have the question here, why is this important? And I was speculating that it was important in part because, I would assume, correct me if you feel differently or know differently, that this is reflective of the pandemic, but we haven't come down from the pandemic.
Absolutely. So I think if you look between 2020 and 2021, you see that there's a pretty significant jump in both the psychiatric crisis numbers and the alcohol number. I think that's right in the, when the pandemic was at its peak. And certainly, there have been numerous studies that have shown that coming out of the pandemic, there was an increase in the number of folks that were experiencing psychiatric crisis.
Thank you. Could I ask a follow-up on this slide? Now, this is the entire universe of those who may be eligible or suitable for this alternative destination. Do you have a sense out of these numbers of who? Because I mean, I imagine a lot of these people have other kind of co-occurring medical situations, obviously, and they would have to go to an ED. But do you have a sense, doctor, of how many might be eligible for this alternate destination?
Well, if you look at Fresno's example, so the earlier part of the presentation, there was about 2,000 patients that were off-ramped in the course of a year. You know, their population is a little smaller than Sacramento County, so I would anticipate that in and around over 2,000 people potentially could be moved to another facility.
So out of the, you know, say, 13,000, 14,000 in this list, a couple thousand anyway?
20%, 25%.
Thank you.
So this highlights the mission here. So we have a lane of patients that are, by statute today, have to go to the emergency department. And we have, just based on that volume, we have an emergency care infrastructure that is buckling under that weight. And our role within the agency and as providers in the field and as innovators in this space is to try to identify where these off-ramps can exist. So with our mission today and the ask of the board is that there's approval for the triage to alternate destination program so that we can bring our stable psychiatric patients, not to an emergency department, but bring them instead to one of our partner facilities in the county, which we'll get to in a second, and then also patients with substance use disorder or related complaints, or if they just simply need a sobering need, that they can be moved to a sobering center within the county. So we've identified these two facilities. So one is just across the street here, so our well-spaced facility at Seventh and H. That's the sobering center that's been identified, and we're working with to put them under contract. And then the other is our mental health treatment center on Stockton Boulevard, which has been identified as our location for psychiatric, patients in psychiatric crisis. So this is a facility that has a psychiatric urgent care, where an ambulance can drop a patient, they can go and have their psychiatric evaluation and determine if there's a further need. So we've decided to intentionally start our program small so that we can put these facilities forward to the state EMS authority as for approval of our general program, which is what comes next. But the intent is to continue to talk to other facilities across the county to expand our bed spaces that would be available for our crews to be bringing patients appropriately to these facilities.
Excuse me, doctor. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So I'm familiar with both of these locations. One is a locked facility and the other is not, correct?
So the mental health treatment center, yes.
Schmick is locked and well-spaced isn't. So is a determination made in the field about which to... So is a determination made in the field about which to take a patient to based on their presentation and doesn't make any difference?
So it does. So if the patient has an underlying psychiatric care need, so for example, the person who has suicidal ideation, suicidal thoughts, they have no other medical problems, this is somebody that can be cleared in the field, so there's no need to come to us in the emergency department to clear them, then they can be brought to the psychiatric urgent care for care. The sobering facility, these are patients that are voluntarily wanting to go to a place where they can be just given time to sober. That doesn't need to happen in an emergency department, they can do that in a supervised environment at WellSpace.
Thank you.
So I put up here that there's also a funding source for us, the CareStar Foundation, which, once we have our program vetted and approved by the state EMS authority, we will have an opportunity to submit a grant application to CareStar, which will give us the chance to have some funding available for some of the training, to Supervisor Frost's point, some of the training which is required in order to get our pre-hospital providers up to a level where they're able to make the determination about who can safely go to these facilities. So before I just pass it back to the board for questions, I have a few other points that I just wanted to make because I think they're very important for the overall program and to give not only the audience behind me, but yourselves the full picture. So statute also requires that we establish an emergency medical care committee, the EMCC. So it is, this committee would be established with six members. There is a very specific requirement for each of the members. For example, one needs to be an emergency physician that's board certified or board eligible and working in an emergency department in the county. There's other needs for pre-hospital providers, nurses and folks from, and a representative from a social work or that type of an agency. So we've been working with a number of individuals from across our entire stakeholder community to not only put together our submission to the state EMS authority, but also just in general with our day-to-day EMS operations. And we've put those folks forward to the board as our recommendation for the first members of that EMCC. So I'll read their names. Three of them are actually in the audience with us today. So we have Dr. Alex Schmalz here, we have Jeremy Veldstra, who's one of our nurses at UC Davis, we have Scott Perryman, I don't know if Scott just got stepped out, we've got Matt Burrell from Alpha One Ambulance, we have Karen Scarpo, who's an emergency physician at Sutter, and then we have Kyle Stefano, who's one of our California HealthWorks managers, which who brings a lot of understanding of some challenging patient populations and their interaction with EMS. So it is our intent that these committee members would serve a two-year term and that their initial appointment to this board would start with them establishing their bylaws for how that board would function. And then the ultimate goal of providing a report back to the board of supervisors at least yearly on how the triage to alternate destination program is working. The EMCC will also be in an advisory role to just the general, our general EMS regulatory role within the county as well. The other piece to this is that, and to get back to Supervisor Frost's point about training, we do have a requirement to ensure that our paramedics who are doing or involved in this program are well-trained. Currently, our training curriculum for that is going to be going to the state EMS authority is a five-hour training, which encompasses a number of different kind of domains of learning with regard to psychiatric care, with regard to substance abuse, substance use disorder. Paramedics that are identified within their agencies to be, the folks that want to be stood forward would need to go through that five-hour training program in order to attain a triage to alternate destination accreditation within the county, which would then allow them to work in this space. So a paramedic that does not have that county accreditation would not be able to transport to, in the initial days, the mental health treatment center or WellSpace.
Actually, there's a queue already. Supervisor Hume, would you like to ask questions now?
Thank you, Chair. Before I get into this issue, it just spurred my thought that, I can't remember the number of the legislation, 1163 or whatever it was, that expanded the conservatorship eligibility. I don't remember the cadence we set for report backs, but we are either slightly overdue or it's coming up shortly, so I look forward to that.
That's SB 43, and I was actually just about to comment on that. Unless we want to move in another direction.
Who knew?
Let's do this. I have a couple supervisors in the queue, but you're just about ready to finish, so why don't we?
Sure. So Supervisor Hume, you're talking about SB 43. So SB 43 was legislation put forward by Susan Eggman from Stockton. So the definition for grave disability, so when a patient comes to see us, if their mental health crisis is such that they can't care for their sheltering, their food, their own personal safety, that definition was set forward in the 1960s when Ronald Reagan was the governor. So the current legislation that's in front of us that will go into effect on January 1st, 2025, in Sacramento County, expands upon the definition of grave disability to include substance use disorder and the, essentially, the intersection of substance use disorder, alcohol use, and mental health. So it definitely opens, potentially opens the floodgates to anybody that shows up to the emergency department. If you are intoxicated, you're on a 50-on-50 hold, three-day involuntary hold, and with the potential for a protracted emergency department's length of stay. So you can, we can see that this has the potential to negatively work against us when it comes to the mitigation things or plans that we're putting in place for A-Pod. As a physician, I think that this is good in that certainly people who have substance use disorders, you know, they can't care for themselves. We have population in the county where these people need help and they need care. But I, again, I think that the emergency department may not be the best place for them. So I think us putting in place our triage to alternate destination program sets the foundation or the groundwork for us to maybe mitigate the effects of SB 43 on our 911 and EMS system, much to put us in a place where we're much more nimble and agile to respond to those pressures than we would be today if we did not have a triage to alternate destination program. So, you know, for example, the folks that come in, if there's a substance use disorder that's placed on a 50-on-50 by law enforcement, you know, could this patient be handled at the mental health treatment center? Likely, yes. And those conversations just need to happen and for us to kind of flesh out what the policies and what the interface would look like. But that's certainly going to be work between now and the implementation of SB 43 for us to be doing.
Yeah. Thank you for validating that there is an intersection of these two topics because they do kind of go hand in hand. And it goes back to the question that Supervisor Frost asked relative to the capacity and existence of receiving facilities. And I think, you know, as we stand up this program, as that gets implemented, that really is the linchpin of all of this, is that we have to have somewhere to, an alternate destination to triage to. And then that gets back to this program, which, again, I want to thank all of the EMSA folks, yourself, for, I mean, really, from day one, you made it a cornerstone of your tenure to try and bring down A-Pod as a part of your work here. And then obviously, all of our first responders and our emergency medical providers and the hospital council representatives, the hospital healthcare provider representatives for working on this issue. But the framework or the allowance to be able to do this is only one part of it, which is the first hurdle of being allowed to take that off-ramp and use something other than a very clogged ER. And so really, we're creating a new funnel by which we can get people out of the same bottleneck into a different program. And then the next piece of this, I believe, and the important parties that are not at the table in discussions to date are the health plan providers. And we really need to figure out how to engage them. I certainly stand here, ready to help and engage and do anything I need to do to, you know, lift up SB 1180 and what it's trying to do. But I would like to, in advance of the fiat coming down via legislation, to engage that group into how do they, because it's to their own benefit, really. I mean, if they can keep people out of this intensive ER system and extended hospital stays and get the folks to the right place that they need for the right care that they're desiring and presenting for, then that's a benefit to them as well. And so, you know, whatever I can do to keep this on the forefront and moving forward, you know, obviously, MIH is another important piece of this, which is just, you know, all of the community, paramedicine, I mean, these are all quivers in the, arrows in the quiver or tools in the toolbox that are going to help us meet those goals.
Absolutely. And that's, as we've been generating our policy and putting this program together, that is the constant feedback, not only internally but externally in our offices, who's going to pay for this? Who's going to pay for this? So, you know, I turn to our EMS providers in the field, I think that they're going to do what's right because they have an A-Pod pressure. But let's say we get to the place where we want to get to and all of a sudden we're at 20 minutes and patients are being unloaded and you can just bring them to the emergency department and we can just unload. I don't expect that there's going to be crews that are going to want, or partners that are going to want to do this work for free, and nor should they. So having legislation such as 1180 come forward is welcome because not only does it talk about providing a funding source for not only programs such as this, but also for MIH and other innovation that is on the future or on the horizon for us. We can't be funding our EMS system like it was in 1980 when the EMS Act was put forward. This needs to be made, again, nimble and agile so that we can do the right thing for patients. So that kind of, I wanted to talk about some future directions here. I think that the SB 40 piece is important for us to kind of keep on our horizon, given that it's close aboard, being January 1st of next year. We've got seven months now to kind of wrap our heads around how this is going to impact emergency care in the county. And our, again, I think our triage to alternate destination program is going to put us in a place to be able to do that. So with that, one more person I want to recognize, and that's Kristin Bianco, I want her to raise her hand. So this lady here is the one that gets, should get most of the kudos for what we've done in-house. She stood up this program from nothing to where we are today. We are imminently about to submit our packet to EMSA, and we expect probably about a 30-day review, and I do not see any hurdles as far as it being approved by the state, which will allow us to move forward with the support from the board. So with that, I turn it over to you for further questions or comment.
Thank you. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Dr. Canidge. I'm very supportive of this and appreciate all your work. And, you know, I really want to thank all the EMS and other first responders. I thought you were all here to talk about our zoning code amendments, but this is more exciting. But thank you for all you do. And I was going to bring up those points about SB 43, I mean, I think, and the capacity that Supervisor Hume touched on, I mean, obviously, that's going to be our big challenge. How do we maximize this TAD and obviously set up more capacity comply with SB 43? But I appreciate how this is complementing certainly that process. So thank you.
Supervisor Frost.
I just wanted to quickly ask how the dispatchers play in all this and are they going through special training? Will that be part of the overall conversation? The phone dispatchers, because they're the ones that actually do the initial triage, right?
They do. I think that that is a kind of what is our next step, is to be talking about, you know, how does emergency medical dispatch play a role in this process? But currently, you know, we, the dispatch will continue to do what it does today. And then call for service comes out, 911 response, and then those medics will then be able to make educated decisions based on their training to determine if those people can be moved away from an emergency department to another alternate care site.
Okay. So everybody, I mean, all medics will be able to do the triaging in the field? It's not like MIH or other programs?
Correct. As long as they've been trained, as long as they've had that five hours of training, which puts them accredited in the county to be able to do this work. Yes.
Thank you. It's exciting.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do we have any members of the public like to address the board this time on this? Madam Clerk?
We do not have. There is a member of the public. But we didn't have anybody sign up in the RTA system.
But we do have somebody. Doctor, before you sit down, I just want to say that for, you know, those of us up here who have been dealing with this issue for many years, you are a tremendous addition to the Sacramento County family and really appreciate your work.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Yes. Yeah, come on, come forward.
I really appreciate what I heard from the doctor. I just ask a question. My name is Jan Pop. If somebody is labeled by law enforcement or somebody being 51-50 like I am, if I get in this depression, what is going to happen then? I mean, being in depression because of the circumstance when you don't agree with something and you tell your point, like, SuFrost, she might know some of the situation. I encounter it more. Having four arson on my properties, nobody intends to do nothing. I speak out, I send an email to fire investigation. Last Friday, I got five years restraining order for sending emails to a fire department, giving them a lead of, based of the investigation I did myself because they don't want to do nothing, a reason they might know better, based of information of the guy who burned my property, him being informant, and I am treated like, from a victim, I'm treated like criminal? Sorry, guys. So I speak out, I don't like to admit something was wrong, or I mean, I said yes, to me, yes is yes, no is no. So based of being a vocal and speaking out, I found out true.
If you could wrap up, I'm going to ask our staff to actually help you with your situation, but if you could wrap up, your time is up.
Yeah, so I'm labeled with being 51-50, and in case of somebody will call on me or they call the emergency, I'm going to be put, because I'm labeled being 51-50, they might force me, take me to hospital and give me whatever, but I am not. I'm just under the stress.
Thank you.
And very.
Thank you very much. Mr. Villanueva, could we have the appropriate staff person follow up? Thank you. Dr. Quist, I believe, is here.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
I really appreciate.
We appreciate you being here. Thank you. Any other members of the public? All right, let's bring it back to the board. Is there a motion? Chair will move to approve staff recommendations?
Enthusiastically second.
All right.
I shouldn't have said enthusiastically, that made Desmond got a slip in there.
And the motion carries by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item, please.
The next item is the county executive comments.
Thank you, Supervisor Canidge. I just want to highlight a couple of things, some great opportunities that we've been seeing coming forward and showing how proud we are of the work that the county employees do. At the beginning of the meeting today, before you walked in, we had a video running, it was called Sacramento County By the Numbers for 2013. It's a great opportunity for us to use quantitative data to show all the wonderful work that we do. We'll be running that before the meetings, just as people come in, we can share that. We also have, in addition to the video, that you could put on your pages if you'd like, we also have hard copies that could be we also have hard copies that could be distributed, and we also have, it's on the web, so we can link it out if you wanted to send that information out. It highlights so much of the data that we have. I mean, some of the things are highlighting the 12.9 million passengers that go through the airport, economic developments, assistance of 535 entrepreneurs, businesses, and developers for helping them get resources and assistance, and then DHAs, their veteran services, helped 5,700 veterans, resulting in $9.3 million worth of veterans' benefits to those folks. So just something you may want to share, it's something that we are definitely proud of, especially with me and my executive team. Also, we had a small, what I might term as a hiring event, some people may disagree with me, but on Thursday, April 21st, we had the Bring Your Child to Work Day. So this was a wonderful day and an opportunity for county staff to bring their kids and their kiddos to the workplace and share what their parents do and why it's so important for the county and what we do. It was a great opportunity for parents to show the hard work and dedication of our county staff. We had more than 350 kids come join their parents on that workday. We've had a variety of different activities for them, everything out in the DOT world, Department of Transportation world, but we also had an event here in the chambers. I just wanted to thank Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Hume for their explanation of local government to the student, or to the kids. You know, it was a great opportunity. I had a fun moment where I got to ask them what they wanted to do when they grew up, and I had the...
Before or after we presented?
That was after we presented. I asked them what they were interested in, their career ambitions, and I had the attorneys, so I got to represent, you know, we have county council, and we have public defender, and we have the district attorney, along with a host of other opportunities, including supervisors. We also had engineers, and I had to go through that one. And then we had law enforcement, which was not only talking about our law enforcement, but our investigators and some of the great work that probation does for us. I did have a wrench thrown in this whole exercise, which was, one person wanted to become a NASCAR driver, and I was having a hard time matching those two together. I was able to think of all the yellow iron that we have running out at the landfill, they do make their tracks, they do race around pretty quickly, so I said there's an opportunity there. So again, just want to highlight all the fantastic work that Sacramento County does, and thank you, guys, for the support that you provide us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will say, you know, Mr. Villanueva, as somebody who comes from an IT background, you're the last person in the world I would have expected to be a great communicator, but the communication that's coming out of the county is the best that I've seen it in the 10 years that I've been here.
Well, thank you. I'm an accountant, too, so.
Not helping yourself.
I overcome both of those. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Desmond.
Well, not to take away from Supervisor Humes and Serna's presentation here in the boardroom, Supervisor Kennedy and I actually talked to some of the students, the kids as well. We didn't have all 350. It was about agendizing, and I was trying to get them to put on the agenda an item to get more staff for District 3. Obviously, that didn't go very far, so.
All right. No other members? I believe we have an adjournment.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to adjourn today in memory of George Meese. George Meese, a longtime Folsom resident, passed away on March 6, 2024, at the age of 87. George was born on April 20, 1936, in Oakland, California. He was the fourth child born to Edwin Meese Jr. and Leon Feldman Meese, after Myron and Cliff and Edwin Meese, who some of you may recall was the Attorney General under President Ronald Reagan. George's family life was full, and the family was faithful supporters of their church, Zion Lutheran, where George's grandfather, Edwin Meese Sr., was a founding member. After graduating from Concordia, George attended UC Berkeley before following in his grandfather's and father's footsteps into public service. George started his first government job with Alameda County at the Oakland Municipal Airport, or Municipal Court, sorry. After working there for several years, George was promoted to the Fremont Municipal Court and was later promoted to the Livermore Pleasanton Court as the court administrator. George and his wife Bella Henley Clayton were married in 1975, and George became a stepfather to Bella's daughters Cynthia, Marcia, and Paris, our very own Paris Dai from Liberty Towers. That family moved to Pleasanton, California in 1975. George worked at the Livermore Pleasanton Court until he was appointed by California Governor George Duke Magin in 1983 as the Director of the California Department of Motor Vehicles, when he moved his family to Folsom, California. After Governor Duke Magin appointed him in 1986 to the California Unemployment Insurance Board, George served as a member and a vice president for several years. He was reappointed to the board for a third and final term by Governor Pete Wilson, and then retired in 1997. George enjoyed a long retirement with his wife Bella, with whom he was married for 47 years. George will be fondly remembered by many members of our Sacramento community, and I ask that we adjourn today in memory of George Meese. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Then we will adjourn in the memory of George Meese.